Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30. I'm going to call the meeting to order. You all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, welcome, everyone. We've got lots of people in the room tonight. It was kind of fun. Uh, so the first thing on the agenda tonight is the Oath of Office. Uh, we have one returning board member, that's me, and two new board members taking the oath tonight. And so, Dr. Pierce, will you please administer the Oath of Office?
First, I'll have Mr. Connors join me in front of the dials. And I'll let you speak in front of my [inaudible].
Oh, yeah, because, yeah, because no one can hear me when I talk.
So, I think, Mr. Connors, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I say your name.
I, Micah Connors.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Washington.
Will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Washington.
And will faithfully perform the duties of Director of Kennewick School District.
And will faithfully perform the duties of Director of Kennewick School District.
Number seventeen.
Number seventeen.
In the city, or, excuse me, in the county of Benton.
County of Benton.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities. Oh, well, that's good.
Okay, Ms. Glennhill, would you please join me in the presence here after? Uh, please swear you will give me some time to take any photos with your family. If you'd like before, please swear in front of your [inaudible]. Okay. Ready? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I say your name.
I, Brittany Glendill. Do solemnly swear. To solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Washington. And I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Washington. And will faithfully perform the duties and faithfully perform the duties of Director of Kennewick School District Number Seventeen and Director of Kennewick School District Number Twenty. In the county of Benton. In the county of Benton. State of Washington. State of Washington. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability.
Welcome to the board. Welcome to the couple of photos.
They're like unblocked.
Like you said.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, then welcome up here. Let's take a little bit of a walk.
Sure.
Okay. I say your name.
I, Joshua Moore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of Washington.
And the State of Washington.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of Director of Kennewick School District Number Seventeen.
Of Director of Kennewick School District Number Seventeen.
And the county of Benton.
And the county of Benton.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Very cool. We did. We have a whole, mostly new board. This will be fun. We welcome to you both.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the election of officers. Okay, so, per Board Policy 1120, at the first regular meeting following the certification of elections of the school director, the director shall elect, from among the members, a president, vice president, and legislative representative to serve one year terms. As president, I will facilitate the proceedings. First, I will call for nominations for board president.
I nominate Gabe Galbraith. I nominate Gabe Galbraith as board president.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, first and a second. Holly, will you call for the roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Glennhill?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Congratulations. Uh, okay, now I will call for nominations for board vice presidents. Oh, wait, sorry. Okay, hold on. If the new president is elected, you will turn over the plea to the president to continue. All right, you're up. I forgot, I forgot to read that part. I'm done.
That quick.
All right, so I will call for nominations for board vice president.
I'll nominate Micah Valentine.
Go second.
I'll second.
Holly, will you call for the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Glennhill?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Micah. I will now call for nominations for board legislative representative.
I'll nominate Brittany Glendill.
Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Holly, will you call for the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Glennhill?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Brittany. All right, so now we will proceed with our agenda with communication from parents, staff, and district residents. The Kennewick School District Board of Directors appreciates hearing from the community. At regular board business meetings, the Board of Directors provides an opportunity for communication from parents, staff, and district residents. This time is reserved during the working meeting for the board to listen to comments, input, and information. The board does not respond to comments provided as the goal is to listen and learn. Please know that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. As appropriate, the board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. Please note, it is important for all community members to feel welcome safe during the board's business meeting. The board does not take public comments on issues related to personnel or individually named staff members at board meetings. However, you can email the board with any such comments. Finally, please remember that your words have impact and that not the school district are responsible for your words. We caution all speakers that it is possible that your statements could violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. If you are unsure of your legal aspect of your remarks, you should seek independent legal advice. In any case, we ask that you help us model for our students what a respectful and inclusive community looks and sounds like. Guidelines for addressing the board. Please use, okay. When the, when the board president calls your name, please stand to the podium at the front of the room. You have two minutes to address the board. A stoplight on the screen will let you know when to begin, when you have one minute remaining, and when your time has ended. Thank you for taking the time to be here this evening. So, I have this list. I will call up each individual to begin your two minutes, and I will do my best to get your names correct. I apologize in advance if I do mispronounce it. So, first up is Dottie Stevens.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the time to address you, and I thank you for your continued leadership and those of you that are willing to serve at a time when we find sometimes lack of leadership and lack of service to others. I thank you so much for being willing to take on the Kennewick School District and do that for us. When I went to school, the first thing I saw at my college was, "Enter to Learn, Go Forth to Serve," Class of '71. Those were the first directions on my path at my university, and so I began my lifelong mission in public education service to all. I was very pleased to see that fifty-six percent of the voters had voted for the levy so that we could remain competitive in service and staffing to neighboring large districts and certainly to service to our kids. In talking with my neighbors, they referred to the priorities we had of safety, activities, and support for the students as reason they supported the levy. I was glad to hear it. Gone down twice. I attended the recent Community Partners Breakfast and appreciated hearing more about our SSOs, the School Safety Officers, from Scott Childs, and support issues for staff and programs, especially the Teacher Academy. I remember when Nancy Kerr started this program and it became statewide, and students received high school credit on their path to their career. So, it was so good to see it thriving. Also, I appreciate the willingness of the board to listen to parents and community members. My neighbors and grandparents assist their kids and students. They are teaching cursive and wondering the status of this essential skill. A unique signature is required for voting and on many documents. It is a quick way to take notes for future reference and to communicate without technology and its oversight. It also teaches fine motor skills and could be part of many curricular areas, including calligraphy and art. That's one of my issues. So, I thank you for listening to me, and I will leave this with Tracy.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is Pat Masteller.
Hello, my name is Pat Masteller. I am representing the Kennewick Citizens Levy and Bond Committee, and I want to welcome the new board members, and it's nice to see the old continuing board members. Uh, I just want to basically talk a little bit about education from the standpoint of our committee. Uh, we are strictly a volunteer committee. We are not associated with the school district, but we do support the school district in its endeavor to get a bond and levy passed when they have campaign. Uh, we support the students, and during a campaign, we will work with you, the administration, the staff, as well as the community on what we can do to make sure that we are successful in any levy or bonds campaigns that are coming up. So, we are looking forward to working with you guys, and welcome aboard, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Lauren Parker.
Hi, and welcome, new school. Do you want me to wait till the time? Hi, and welcome, new school board members. I'm Lauren Parker. My wife signed in so I could have four minutes to report back from when she spoke last month because I will need slightly more than two minutes. She spoke last month thanking KSD. Historically, KSD has provided honors math options all the way from middle school through high school, and my two older daughters have greatly benefited from this dedication to meeting all students' needs, including the district's advanced students. She also stated a concern because honors math classes, as my daughters took them, are being discontinued in middle school. Alyssa St. Hilaire took down my wife's information and met with us and our daughter, Lila, who is a junior at Kamaiakin. Alyssa was very receptive and responsive. She looked into all our concerns and wrote us back an email with her findings. We read her email and thanked her for listening to us, but we feel KSD is still taking away the great opportunities our daughters had. KSD is presenting that they still have honors classes. They are just taking away the word honors because they need to make a uniform naming system across all middle schools. KSD allows kids who excel in math the opportunity to take a math class that is a grade level above their current grade. Taking math a grade level above is what KSD is now considering in calling honors. However, when my daughters were at Desert Hills, the school offered regular math classes and classes that covered the same subject but at an accelerated rate. This accelerated rate class was called honors because it covered more chapters in the book. My daughters, along with other students, were able to not just take the regular math class a grade above them, but they were placed in a math class a grade above them that was accelerated and allowed them to cover more chapters than the regular class a grade above them. This class is called honors, so instead of taking algebra, they took honors algebra. Instead of taking geometry, they took honors geometry. My wife has communicated with the Desert Hills principal, and he confirmed that they are now covering four less chapters under this new model per year. For children like my daughters, that adds up to twelve chapters over the middle school years, which is basically a year of math they will miss out on. My goal in speaking with you tonight is to encourage KSD to allow middle schools, at least one that all kids have access to, what they used to provide. Please let them provide two classes, a regular math class and a math class that moves at an accelerated rate that covers additional chapters. This format allowed my daughters and their peers to be challenged with rigor, working at an accelerated rate in complex material, covering coursework a grade above them. This proved beneficial for this cohort of students as can be seen by their SAT scores and grades. I ask the KSD board to reconsider its changes to the district's math curriculum and go back to the way it was when my daughters were at Desert Hills. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mark Sheeney.
So, good evening. Congratulations to the new school of board members, and thank you to the release board members. My name is Mark Sheeney, and I have worked for the Kennewick School District since January 2018 as a guest teacher with many long-term assignments. Because of lack of time, I gave you paper and email copies of my remarks to give you other points to consider. In Flor- in May, Florida voted to prohibit cellphone use during instructional time for blocked access to social media. These ideas have found support across the political spectrum. The Department of Education says that seventy-seven percent of schools prohibit non-academic cellphone use during school hours. There are many disadvantages to allowing students to use phones in class, which many think outweigh the benefits. It's not that cellphones are inherently bad. The main problem is that students overwhelmingly use their cellphones for social media, texting, watching videos, or gaming, sometimes when they are pretending to use them for educational purposes. Though many great educational sites exist for phones, they, they also exist for PCs. A question of whether to implement a cellphone policy ban needs to be discussed. This board should discuss it. I think that district survey, at least to the high school educators, about cellphone policy should be sent out. Public forums are also important. Leaving the decision to ban cellphones solely to teachers will cause too much inconsistency. I have seen many classes where cellphone use was allowed unless it becomes a problem. In my experience, this caused students to frequently be off-task, requiring frequent redirection. I have seen high school classes where cellphones are banned, but it is rare. Students need consistency. Teachers are not always supported when they request a cellphone removed from class. Some teachers have just given up limiting cellphone use because of this problem. No teacher wants to deal with that kind of battle, nor do they want to be the unpopular teacher. Based on my wide experience throughout the district, I submit that student learning is greatly diminished when cellphones are allowed in class. We should follow what Florida and other places have done. We should ban student cellphone use in the district. I know that removing cellphones from the classroom will improve learning in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is James Rableo.
Hey, guys. Dr. Miller, Ms. Glendill, Mr. Connors, I'd like to congratulate and thank you for running a clean campaign. We have mudslinging or going solos to attack your opponent's character or their families. It sends a clear message to the community and even to the children of this district how we should behave as adults, and I really do appreciate it and thank you for that. So, Micah, when you engage with people on Twitter and like images mocking mass shootings, especially in light of the recent events at Kamaiakin High School, and like images of Satan sewing up a pride flag stating, "Down with LGBTQ death cult", it sends a message. You're the marketing guy. This is not like playing stupid. This is your brand, and this image that you all have in your email will probably be the image of any policy that the district tries to follow with any flag policy. You called for the resignation of Diane Sundvik and Rob Mabry on your Twitter. You ran to the next town over and demanded the resignations of board members. You really like throwing tantrums, but you don't like being questioned. So, I questioned you. And when I questioned you over email, you said that you would give me real answers about these images and made references to woke mobs and complained about your freedom of speech, but used the shares and posts of the teachers under you to prove their agenda. It doesn't matter if you or I agree on the content. It's the hypocrisy of it. This behavior is not appropriate conduct for using our taxpayer-funded email. And I think that with onboarding two new school board members, I implore this board to review its ethics policy and fix it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that's the last name.
Yeah.
So, we've got one online?
We, we have.
I'm sorry. Yes, it's the answer.
Online.
Becky Elias.
What was that?
Becky Elias. And just the surname.
Okay. See if we can get Becky here. Hello, are you there, Becky?
I'm here.
You're good to go.
Okay. Hi, my name is Becky Elias. My daughter attends Forza Elementary School. She's in the first grade there. And I wanted to take just one second to thank the district for providing such amazing opportunities for our daughter to become bilingual, which I'm sure will help her provide her many opportunities in the future. Um, I really can't say enough amazing things about Forza. It's just such a great school, and I know many parents are hoping that the district will be able to provide increased bilingual learning opportunities as our kids reach middle and high school. Additionally, our daughter attends the Twenty-First Century Before and After School Program, and we recently learned that their grant funding for this program will end after this school year. Um, I'm hoping that the district will be able to look into what can be done to keep this program going as is. As it just offers our kids a safe place after school and is academically focused. It has greatly contributed to our daughter's confidence and social skills, and it provides learning through Spanish language tutoring, educational activities, and help with her homework. And I would just really like to see the program continued and to be available to the kids and support it. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Becky. All right. That's all we have for communication from parents, staff, and residents. So, we will move forward with our consent items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent item?
I will move to accept the consent item as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Holly, will you call for the roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Glendill?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, moving on, we will get to our superintendent and board member reports. So, Dr. Pierce, will you start?
Great, yes. So, welcome again to our new board members. And I have just a few things that I wanted to highlight this evening as part of my report. First, I want to share that we're so excited that students and staff will be moving into the new Ridgeview Building next week, and the building is beautiful. I know we've had board members have the opportunity to tour, and I'll let you, maybe some of you want to comment on that. Um, so, but we're excited. There's going to be a community open house and ribbon cutting on January 17th. And so, we're really excited to have the community have the opportunity to visit the building and see it then. And we just want to thank our Ridgeview neighbors for their patience and, and, and understanding during the construction process, and also thank our voters. Uh, it's through the passage of the 2019 bond that we were able to complete Ridgeview as well as Amistad Phase Two, the additions at Kamaiakin and South Ridge, and of course, Kennewick High School as well. So, Ridgeview was our, our last bond project, and we're just really appreciative of the community's support. Uh, the next thing I wanted to talk about was actually mentioned a little bit during public comment or just mentioned briefly, some of the safety issues that have been occurring over the last several weeks in our schools and in our community. Uh, we, as the community knows, we had a student arrested and expelled who had guns in a backpack at one of our high schools, and we've had several of our schools in lockdown situations because of community incidents occurring in neighborhoods near schools. And so, I know any time that there's an incident at one of our schools or near one of our schools, it, it raises concern and, and anxiety potentially within the community and with our students and staff. Safety continues to be a top priority for us, and as the board knows, we are continuing to invest in safety. Our school safety officer program was mentioned, and in January, we'll be working toward filling more of those positions. We'll be bringing on the two additional school resource officers at our middle schools who don't currently have school resource officers. And, and we're continually assessing through our district safety team and getting feedback from our schools, you know, what could, what additional things we could do in terms of facility safety. So, it's an ongoing topic for us and, and one that we're, you know, never done with. We also, in terms of communication, we just, our intent is to be very transparent with the community when these things happen and be very communicative. Uh, we use Parent Square to do that, and our communications department in schools to do that, and our communications department in schools do a great job of just providing ongoing information to parents in the community so people understand what is going on. And so that will continue as well. This may be a topic that the board wants to discuss more in the future, but I also just wanted to acknowledge and thank our voters because it's through the passage of our last levy that we were able to add some of our additional safety measures, as the board knows. And then finally, I want to take the opportunity tonight to just follow up on the math pathway item. Alyssa did meet, as was shared, and she's got some information as part of the student goal report on graduation and dual credit and math pathways. So, there's an opportunity for the board to ask some questions there during that presentation. And then, of course, at our next meeting, I can follow up on some of the items that were brought up this evening during public comment. That's my report.
Thank you. Mallory?
First of all, welcome, Mrs. Glenn Hill and Mr. Miller. I'm excited to see what you guys do this year. So, we did have a superintendent student advisory council this morning. The topic was financial literacy, which I believe is on the agenda for today, so I'm really interested to hear what you guys think about that. Mrs. Pierce broke our groups up into smaller groups and gave us some papers with five questions, all about financial literacy, just to get a good idea of what students are thinking about this and how they're feeling. For example, one question was, on a scale of one to five, how important do you think it is to learn financial literacy competencies in high school? And everyone said between a three and five, most people being four and five, so it is important to these students, although we were at a little bit of a disagreement on how we might do this and if the students do want it to be a requirement for the students, as in it being a credit or it being a non-credit requirement. So, we didn't get too much into what it would look like for this to be in schools, and I know that we'll talk about that furthermore, but I do want you to know that the students think it is important that we have that, and I'll look into more of the feedback that we got. We got written down feedback from the students, so I'll be looking into that to see more specifically how they feel about it, but they do think it is important.
Great, thank you. All right, Dr. Miller.
First one. Go. Yeah, I guess just, I'm excited to be on the board. I'm excited to be involved in the district here, and for today, I don't have much to say.
All right, Ms. Glenn Hill?
Okay, yeah, so, brand new to this, just like Dr. Miller. There have been a few things that I've been able to participate in since the election, none officially until being sworn in tonight, but I did have the opportunity to attend the WASDA conference, which is the Washington State School Directors Association. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Conference. It was held in Bellevue the week after the election. I was able to attend. The first day was a boot camp for brand-new school board members. It was very helpful. We were in class from nine to 5:00 p.m. I was very grateful to Dr. Pierce for attending that with me. She certainly didn't need to be there for her own enrichment, but having her next to me meant that she could customize everything that the presenters were saying to Kennewick School District. It was very, very helpful. And then the other sessions at the conference were helpful as well, mostly just giving me an overview of everything I don't know, so it was great. I did have an opportunity to go to the TRITech pie contest. That was a fun experience. I was so impressed with TRITech, with the students there, with the staff and administrators, with the building itself. It was really a great experience and a great way to be introduced to TRITech. It was my first time going to visit the school. I did have a board orientation with Dr. Pierce and just were able to cover a few things in our board duties. That training is ongoing. We have another training at the end of this week. And then I was able yesterday, yeah, it was just yesterday, I was able to go on a tour of the new Ridgeview Elementary, which was really, for me personally, a great experience. That was our elementary school before Amen Creek was built, so I have very fond memories of Ridgeview and just love the staff and the teachers that are there, and I'm excited for them to have a new building. They are certainly deserving of the best and the newest, so that was a great experience.
Thank you. Micah?
All right, I actually have a lot here, so I'll try to go super quick. Mallory, we also want to hear your feedback when we get to that financial stuff, so please dive into that. Yeah, so I actually went to the pie eating contest. They actually had a morning and a, or I mean, a pie, it wasn't a pie eating contest, but it was a pie competition. And so I went, I was in the morning slot. There's a nine o'clock and there's a 12 o'clock one. I went to the nine o'clock one, and it was like so good that I actually went to the 12 o'clock one also. And it was actually totally different pies, and so it was kind of fun. So, that was, TRITech is so cool for a lot of reasons, but that was great. Gabe and I actually had an appointment with a teacher this week, and I won't be specific, but we watched up the school. We saw the resource officers in action because there's shooting in the area and they were there talking on the radio, and so it was really actually, it was, I mean, it was unfortunate that was happening, but it was actually, in a way, really cool to see the resource officers in action, working with the police, communicating, locking things down, organizing things. It was just, it was really neat. It was like kind of a good testament, like this is a really good program that's really protecting kids. So, and that was a levy, a levy thing, as we all know. So, Dodie and Pat, I know you guys are aware of that, so that was, that was really cool to see that. Also, I went on the Ridgeview tour. Beautiful, beautiful building, very, I just, that's what I like to see in schools, is clean, kind of clean, modern look. It's just, is fantastic, really cool. The technology really stuck out to me. So, that was really cool. Also, very impressed with our tour. Our tour guide, I do not see him here today, he was fantastic. So, he knew everything, in and out, every detail was fantastic. It was awesome. Okay, Gabe and I and Josh, we're on a, we gotta get on the Heartland News like a radio podcast this week. It was kind of fun, and he wasn't sworn in yet, so we were able to do that, and it was, that was a really neat thing. We got talked for about an hour. I got to sit down with several counselors. I had a guy from Bainbridge Island call me about our sex ed curriculum and actually made me think of a couple of questions I have for Tracy and Matt, so that'll come up. Anyway, this is a really, really busy week, a lot of fun, lot of neat things, and I'll end it with this finally. Go Dogs.
Thanks, Mike. Mike?
I was in Ridgeview a couple of weeks ago with Diane, and it was just a wonderful building, doing a great job. It'll be nice to have the kids move in there. That'll be a great testament to the, being on time, on budget is pretty good luck. Also, went to the community partner breakfast here a couple of weeks ago. Very well attended, great presentation. They gave a nice speech about the SSOs, so that was really, really a wonderful program. Other than that, just want to welcome Josh and Brittany to the board. You guys are, you all have lots and lots and lots and lots and lots of questions. So, talking to Brittany briefly about, you know, the 200-page, you know, snapshot.
271.
Yeah, exactly. It's tremendous amounts of information. So, you know, if you have questions, please call, ask, you know, everyone's here to help.
Thanks, Mike. So, I will just add, I attended Ridgeview, the tour last night as well. One of the things actually I really liked about Ridgeview is all the specials are on their own side of their building, so it's like a wing of specials. You have library, technology, gym, music, all the way to the, one of the east side.
West side.
West side, and then all the classes go to the east. So, I thought that was pretty, pretty neat. So, looking forward to that. And then I attended WASDA this last November. Got to discuss and chat and get to know Josh and Brittany a little bit better, so that was fun. And just, yeah, look forward to moving along and getting going here in the new year. So, welcome to the board, you too. And welcome back, Mike. And that's it for our board report and updates. So, we will move on to our next agenda item, reports and discussions, and we'll start with TRITech Skill Center, and Mr. Paul Randall will be presenting.
And by the way, they have a lot of these competitions, like food competitions, and I go to every single one of them. And Diane goes to a lot of them, too. I see her back there. She's, she knows the goods, where the good stuff is.
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about TRITech, and I can give a little bit of an annual update. So, once again, I just love showing the picture of the building, and I'm really proud of the building and what it looks like, and it just makes me happy. That's why I put in the presentations. So, just for a brief overview, TRITech is a cooperative of eight different school districts, and we serve juniors and seniors in high school. Our role is to be a branch campus of every single high school in our area. We provide very high-quality preparatory CTE programming, which could not be offered in a single high school setting. So, if you think of our large high schools, you couldn't pull off the dental assisting or the pre-nursing or the pre-physical therapy programs that happen in our programs year in and out. We serve students, as I mentioned, juniors and seniors in the regular school year. We have summer session, they're going down to entering ninth graders, and we have a long, long history of success. 1981 is when it was built on that campus location. We're a school of choice. Students apply to come to TRITech from across the region. There's 18 quality programs this year. We're looking to add medical assistance. You'll see that later in the slide. Our facility replicates what it looks like in the real world. So, when you go into the pre-electrical program, you're going to see electrical oriented stuff. I might even have a picture of that later. Our mantra as far as behavior is, what would your employer say? And so that helps frame behavior with, what would your boss say? Let's coach you up so that doesn't happen. We're a shared time tech center, which means half their day at the city school and their half the year at TRITech. So, we get to maintain that connection to their home high school. So, we've got student athletes, we've got people of drama, we've got valedictorians, we've got all types of kids who are still connected to their city school. These are the 18 current programs this year. You'll see the star down at the bottom, three, medical assisting, the setup, all coming forward. So, we just retrofitted a program. So, you can see a nice, broad smattering of courses, all high demand, all family living ranges for these particular programs. They set the student up for success to go to a high-level, high-performing entry-level worker or post-secondary, military, or apprenticeship. So, the role we play is exactly that. We help students strategically plan for their future. We prepare for students for that workforce, direct entry, and the post-secondary. When you look at skill centers, people going in there, they tend, they go to community colleges, they tend to stay longer, they tend to get higher grades, and they tend to finish earlier. So, very powerful metrics on that. We are a capstone for our sending high school CTE program. It's very rigorous, it's very relevant. You don't have to answer the question, well, what are we learning this for today? Because it's pretty obvious why you're learning it, because it's very connected. We've got industry, business and industry advisory committees for all 18 different programs. Meet three times a year with those business and industry folks, and so they help guide us, keep us relevant and connected. You can see that the next potential HVACR program in medical assisting, HVACR, we tried to float last year and we didn't have enough student enrollment, and so at a skill center, you have to have enough students because they pay the bill for the program to run. So, we mopped all that a little bit, and we are going to try that pre-medical assistance. And one of the things that every TRITech student walks out with is a TRITech employment portfolio. We've got students competing for jobs very, very well. They can show exactly what they do. They have certifications, they have dual credit from different community colleges. It's pretty neat. That's uniform and required across all programs. So, the TRITech advantage is this, is internships in clinics. I think I have a slide later on about how well we're doing with that, but in dental assisting, our students who have 85%, who have less than 5% of missed attendance, can go and earn an internship placement. Pre-physical therapy, those students are going out as first years to many, many, many different clinics across the community. Our second years are placed in hospitals to go through various rotations. We've got excellent connection with the firefighter agencies, with regional districts, and construction trades partner with Habitat for Humanity, so they are out there working with Habitat Homes. Electrical, we'll get to electrical, we've done well with our pre-electrical students. And then our career launch endorsed programs, which is automotive and diesel technology, as well as firefighter and emergency medicine. Examples of these additional advantages, you can see the industry-recognized certificates. They're transferable anywhere in the nation with these certificates. The CTE dual credit, the college credit the students earn, you can see, since 2000, they've earned over 50,000 college credits, and they've saved over $6 million in tuition. Now, the thing that we're not capturing or capturing there is that they're not buying the texts, they're not spending technology, and they also are getting done with their training earlier. They're becoming economic producers earlier than they are. So, here's my pre-electrical slide. So, our pre-electrical program has been around for four years. We've had overwhelming demand. For the first three years, we turned away over 100 students every single year. Last year, this year, we doubled it. So, for our first three years, you can see 23 students who are working in the industry, they're going to IDEW, they're going to CITC, which is the non-union apprenticeship program, they're going to Boeing, they're going all over the place with these pre-electrical skills. So, really happy about that. I want, if you look down here in this column, all the way down to Rodolfo Flores, where it says Northwest Lyman College, we got a text from Rodolfo today. It showed him up on the pole, and the earth is like, wow, I couldn't do that. I'd be shaking like this. Up there doing that, he started at the end of October. It's about a 14-month program. Really neat thing with Rodolfo, he took advantage of our pre-CBL program during the summer, and he got a scholarship for it. He finished his CBL training, and he has a CBL and he's going to Lyman School. He's very employed. I was thrilled to get the text from him. So, demographic data, what does it look like? Right now, you can see where the split is across the big three districts and then the smaller districts. About how many students in North are coming in? About 32%. There's gender. Ethnicity. We reflect our community, which is very, that's a good sign. We look like our community as it's in its students. Special populations, about 10% have IUP, about 4% have 504, and 86% have neither. So, focus areas for this year. We engaged in a pretty significant curriculum and instruction review. And I know I have a question for the board members. I'll answer that. As far as three days onsite review by a team, six other people joined that team to do 87 classroom observations to kind of help us understand how are we doing? What are those things that are doing well? What are those things that could be better at that? And lots of data analysis, lots of focus groups, from district leaders to business and industry folks, secondary parents, the whole thing, pretty cool alumni. Which, from that three-day site review, we engaged depth report back, and then we poured into the report on November 1st. Wow. Very rich discussion with staff and our facilitators to help us think, what should we be focusing on for professional development over the next few years? And so, around that, it's around student engagement. How do we engage our students even more so than before? Also, curriculum mapping for our first and second-year students. How do we do a better job of looking at that? So, that's one of the things that we look at, what we'll be working on. So, another big issue is connecting with our families. The picture's on this side in front of TRITech. That's our all-family barbecue. 600 people came out for that. It was nice for a wonderful hamburger from Sedexo. The gentleman over here, that's Tony, he's our construction teacher, and that's his friends and family. That's at a Habitat house. We usually have that in May. We've partnered with Habitat, as I had mentioned, and we're over 100 homes today with us helping build those charities. It's just awesome. I love his smile, the kids, he's joshing around. He's right here. Expansion of worksite learning. When we talk a little bit about the advantages, last year, 253 students participated, participated in worksite learning, which is more so than just a work-based learning or job show, career report. They were on the job site, they were working at least four weeks, some were up to nine weeks. And so, 27% of our student population was able to engage the workforce. One of our autobody students, Manuel Manning, he was graduating and pitched up, had a worksite learning placement at Fairwater Collision. He applied to Boeing, and he is now working at Boeing in Everett. Because of the collision repair skills, the painting, he's going to paint 747s and 777s. I was just there the other day. I was like, wow, that's pretty cool. Transformation for that, you know, very powerful. Early childhood, we talked about Tiki Bridge, and I heard that earlier. We had 18 students who were in Kinley School District, Wristwood School District, and Pasco School District, ECA, internship, and then pre-physical therapy. We had 20, but this is what they were doing and where they were from. Pretty powerful. Look at all those clinics who were partnering with our pre-physical therapy program and then also the hospital. They know that they want to go into this particular field. So, Building C, we did finish up Building C. It's on our campuses tucked back in the back. It's on our campuses tucked back in the back, you probably never know it was there, but we needed to meet the growth in our pre-electrical as well as our pre-vet tech program. And so last year, I looked at the pictures, and there was snow on the ground in this presentation. So glad there was no snow again, it moved the paths just a few hours ago, so I was happy about that. So there's the artist rendition. We got pretty close, that's good. Got some extra pairs there. And so this is what the pre-electrical program looks like. Where you see the wood construction, that is in Building C. The metal struts that you see there, that's the commercial side. So we blew the program to teachers, they're focusing residential, commercial, and that semester they'll flip, so all kids will get that exposure. There's a picture of the classroom, wonderful improvement. And here's pre-vet tech, the classroom area, and then that's the large clinic area, the therapy area. We've expanded it three times, and it was just very much needed, additional square footage, we're happy about that. And so this is my closing slide. This is Brian Maddison, Josh. These are three construction trade students who sent this text to Tony, the guy who was over at the Habitat House, and they said, "Yo, Tony, we're going to work." Their first-year apprentices, working down in the new Matilla at the Amazon data center. Transformation, when these guys are going to work, their living wage career pathway is awesome, what they're doing with their training. Rodolfo's picture, I added that one to another presentation because it's so powerful, where they're going right now, before they're finishing up. They're getting additional training, and they're making a difference. I love that. They're sharing gaps, that's what, I mean, that's what's happening. They're thoughtful. And with that, thank you for the time to share about Tri-Tech. Questions or comments?
Any questions?
I do have one. I'm curious to know, sorry, did you have a question? I'm curious to know, out of the 18 programs that you have, how many of them lead to a certification, a certification at the end of their two years? And can programs like cosmetology or physical therapy assisting, can they use those hours and roll them over if they're continuing in those areas for a certification?
Yes, so every one of the programs offer industry-recognized credentials. That's a requirement to be a CTE preparatory program, so that's a requirement. When we think about the hours in cosmetology, this one-for-one, they accrue, they cannot fit, they're, finish their cosmetology training under Tri-Tech because they only have max of about 1,080 hours they can earn at Tri-Tech. It takes 1,600 hours. So they take one-for-one, and all the tuition savings is amazing. In pre-physical therapy, they're getting kinesio taken one and two, basic healthcare of, healthcare provider from first aid CPR, that kind of thing. The important thing is about the powers that they can apply if they want to go to PTA school up in Spokane Falls or Watkins County. At Spokane Falls program, they get one point on the application to get in. If they're a second-year, they get three points. So yes, all of these things accrue to help them be more competitive. The points are the big deal, because you can be competing with students who are 25, 26, 27, or 18, 19, when you graduate high school, and you're right in their picture. My daughter's in PT school right now, and the experience, she was really mad that we don't do the program after she graduated. Makes Thanksgiving better. So the hours that she, this would have been perfect because she would have accrued hours, she worked at a local clinic for a couple summers to accrue hours, this would have been perfect for her. So all that adds up, and she knew what she wanted, and they know what they want to do.
I have several questions. First of all, you've got 18 different programs. Do we have a breakdown, or is there any way you could give us some numbers on, first of all, how many people are enrolled in each one of those? And then also graduation rates or rates of internship, so we can, we could see how successful each one of those programs are? And you showed a bunch of the, it looks like we're getting a lot of these kids, but if we could see specific numbers on how many of these kids are going into our internship programs specifically related to these, the programs and the fields? So that would be, is that something you could, that'd be awesome. The second thing, you mentioned in your slides that you talked about when you had the group come to evaluate Tri-Tech, they talked a lot about, you talked about some of the promising practices, evaluating those. I think we can see there's a lot of great things going on here. You also mentioned that you looked at some of the problems of practice that are going on at Tri-Tech. What were some of those that they identified?
So one of those, a couple things, and one was around curriculum mapping for the first and second-year programs, making sure it's really clear what are first-year students doing, what are second-year students doing. That's one of the areas that we're going to work on. Student engagement is something that we're choosing to do more professional development around, and that was one of the areas, they say, "You're doing a great job, but how do we do it better?"
Okay.
Those are two of the areas.
Okay. And then my final question is, is where do you see Tri-Tech going in the next five years? If you had carte blanche to do whatever you wanted, what do you, where do you see, where would you like to take Tri-Tech? Where would you like to see the growth? And what do you need for that to happen?
That's a dangerous question.
Yes, it is.
I love it. So skill centers are, although we're hosted by local school districts, we are state-funded schools, so all of our capital dollars come from the state. And so for us to grow, we have a need to grow. We have about a little over 1,000 seats in our programs right now, and last year we had 2,410 applications for those 1,000 seats. So when we hear about young people wanting, you know, maybe not being engaged, I don't see that. I see young people wanting to be engaged, wanting something that's relevant, I mean, take that big step. So our future is very bright. So we've got a little more land to grow on, we need to get funded from the state legislature, that's important. And for sure, we're going to have to build up rather than out, because it is only so much. And so the trick there is which programs work in going up. And so our healthcare program works in going up, so there might be a multi-story building or something like that. Yeah, it's a very bright future for skill centers across the state because of the preparatory nature of what we offer. There's over 1,000 more students in our kid, 5,000 FTE to 6,000 FTE difference in one year of our student year. Huge growth as far as students taking across the state. It's amazing. Exciting, for real. Dangerous question.
I've got a couple, yeah. So Mr. Reynolds, first off, I want to thank you, because whatever you're doing there, I can't keep my children out of bed to go to Southridge, it's an act of kindness. I don't think they've ever been late to get to Tri-Tech. I have two of them there, and they both come home, and they, honest to God, they won't shut up about it. So we need to work on that.
They can go the other way.
They can go the other way, and it's all positive. So you answered one of my questions. The other question, so you talked about the, excuse me, the medical assistant program. So we've already got a certified nursing assistant program. How is the nursing program and the medical assistant program different, and why do we need two?
So direct patient care and not. And so the medical assistant program is one where you're, you're coming in with your vitals, and you're BP, and you're BP, all that kind of good stuff, it's just settled in the room, that type. But it's not going to be critical acute care under a program. So it is kind of those who want to touch sick people and those who don't.
That is a perfect explanation, thank you. That's funny, thank you so much.
Thanks, Mike. Micah?
I think you kind of answered my questions. I mean, I think I even know the answer to this now, but I was going to ask like, your obstacles, you know, I mean, I mean, what are the things that, what are your needs, what are your obstacles? I agree, I think, I just love Tri-Tech, it's like one of my favorite anythings that we have. And, and so kind of along the lines of these questions, I mean, if you had a need or your number one obstacle that you're trying to overcome, that you're constantly battling against, you know, I think it's, it's probably, you're going to say size and building and growth, but besides that, is there?
So serving eight different school districts, organizing with eight different school districts is always a trick. And our, our mantra is via the below. Because the unique needs of, I mean, we, we're a school of choice, we serve those students from those sending students, and so we have to lead their needs. And so, but it can be challenging. I am very grateful for our community and all of these eight school districts, because they do think about Tri-Tech, it's getting the blessing.
Yeah.
And there's a bus running from every single high school.
And you're like Cornell, you're Bennett City, or, yeah.
We're a full lower mobility base. So we're very fortunate here. And I work with my CTE director colleagues as well. Every other Monday, we work together to coordinate and complement our program. So we're, we're being good stewards of the state dollars as far as how do we not duplicate programs, because that's wasted.
Yep.
Give them more.
As I'm better understanding this, is there anything specific, especially having to coordinate with all the districts, is there any specific issues that you're having with Kennewick School District in particular that, that we might help resolve or, or help you address?
None that I can think of, since Dr. Pierce sent me a check. You know, Kennewick is a wonderful school district. I just came from a Skill Center Directors Association meeting, worked all 17 Skill Center Directors, and we are blessed to be here. We do all try to work together in this region, but no, it, this is a wonderful host district. You guys are very supportive.
Thank you. Thank you. I would just say the one thing, I think you guys are doing a great job, I love Tri-Tech as well. I think one thing, you may not even be capturing from a financial perspective too, is how many students have taken a first year, decided, oh, I don't want to do this, and they changed their, because I know of a couple for sure. And so they haven't gone to college and spent a year of tuition trying to do that job, and then realize they don't want it, and switch. So another thing to add to all the other stuff. Thank you, we appreciate your time, and.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon.
Tracy Gay, but we have a gentleman in the front row, I know he's trying to ask a question, but I just wanted to mention that.
You can catch him out.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't take questions from the audience, but you're welcome to grab them as, yeah, I saw you, you wanted to talk, so I just wanted to make sure you made that connection.
All right, next up is 2223 Financial Closeout, Mr. Vic Roberts.
Vic could do the soft memory. Anybody could.
You know, Vic, I had it open when it said you had it open, so maybe you just need to go out and reopen it. Okay.
Going to go through the 2223 kind of financial closeout, and we'll touch on this year and next year. So first slide here is enrollment, and we have a budget here, 2223 actual, and then actual change from. So the top section here is pretty much your, your basic ed-funded enrollment. Bottom section here is like Tri-Tech, you see Tri-Tech down here, some other programs where the money stays with those programs. That enrollment advisor funding, and truly not basic ed-funded, and it's used specifically for those programs. And I want to explain student enrollment, full-time equivalent, that's what we're paid on. It's different than headcount, so if, you know, a student is a .6 at Kamaiak and a .2 at Tri-Tech, they're a 1.0, but we only get .8, and we only get .6 up here in this section. Tri-Tech gets .2, and that student is a total of .8, and a 1.0 headcount. So I usually deal in FTE, full-time equivalent, that's how we get paid. So that would be a .6 to .5. So that aside, you can see up here the enrollment, a little bit of trend here. Elementary here, we're 99 kids over budget, so that's going to mean we get more money than is budgeted. We can go down here, we're 186 overall we budget. That's equivalent to about $1.6 or $7 million. And that was definitely good news, we're at budget this year, we don't expect to see anything like, like this. And you see elementary, we're still a little behind here, if you go down over here, this is about 84, 8500 students, where this is about 2,000 students. So still about 400 students a difference from four or five years. Our homeschool program, the budget 276, it came in a little under, but most of these kids came back to the in-school. So even that is down a little bit. And that's similar to down here in the bottom here, Mid-Columbia Parent Partnership, MCP, the homeschool program. Under budget, but a lot of these kids ended up back up here. Another area we want to look at is kindergarten. Our kindergarten numbers aren't as strong as they had been in the past, and they actually were a little lower this year also. So that drives, you know, the enrollment, kindergarten, first, the second, the third, the fourth. And we'd like to see that kindergarten stay up and increase, so it has been, I'm not sticking at the 1350 type level. And down here at the bottom, these are the programs that were passed through. CTE, that's a career technical ed education. That was a little bit under budget here for high school, and again, those kids probably did not take the CTE classes, and they were up here taking some other high school classes, probably not to take the CTE classes. That enrollment is up this year, closer to 900. So, you know, it varies from year to year, depending on classes offered and students So overall, down here, 187, not much change down here. As I said before, Running Star, Open Doors, CBC, Academy V's have just passed through. Kids go to these programs, the money comes to us, and the money goes out, back to CBC and then it's you, or the program. And then specialized enrollment, definitely an increase over budget there, quite a few. Poverty rates, we get paid a certain amount of money based on poverty rates, some are federal funding, some are learning state funding, so 58%, the poverty, as that goes up, we get a little more percentage. So that's the enrollment update there. This is generally the chart we use to attract here. And some of the financial information for 2223. So it's been a little bit confusing, we have ESAR COVID money. ESAR is Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, and it's also referred to as COVID-type money. These numbers here pretty much do not have any COVID or ESAR money in these first two columns, just to give an idea of what, what is the real budget, given the levy failure and no COVID ESAR money. And that was about 207 million revenue versus 294 million expenditures, for $25 million. You know, in the whole, that's basically from lost levy, about $22 million or so we did of the levy failure. And then, want to touch on levy equalization, sometimes that's called local effort assistance. And so normally, we would get up here about, you know, $22 million in the property taxes and another 14 million in levy equalization. And that money there for levy equalization, it's, I'm trying to simplify, but from the other side of the state, they may be able to levy 10 cents and get $2 million. And we may be able to levy 10 cents and get $5 million. So that difference there is 1.5 million, we may get that in levy position. So we're going to come back to that later in the presentation, because our property values in Kennewick have went up significantly, and it's really impacted that money. So that aside, we'll stick with 2223 here. The next column here is the actual expenditures with no ESAR money. So we actually, revenue came in at 277 million, that's without any ESAR money this year, the state revenue, 233 million versus 226. And then down here, no ESAR expenditures in this, 294 million, so we did, you know, better than expected, 17.6 million expenditures over revenues versus 1.5 million. And then you come over to here, the final with the ESAR money, about $16.3 million of ESAR money here. A little bit of ESAR money used in here for mental health and tutoring. A little bit of ESR money used in here for mental health and tutoring, the some contracts we've had. And then we get down to about $3 million expenditures over revenue. And down further, the fund balance only decreased about $4 million, 46.3 million. Which given the fact that we lost our levy, you know, we've tried to keep this fund balance up. We know that we're going to need the fund balance to get us through the next couple of years. And so that's, your fund balance is basically kind of like your assets minus your liabilities. It's not quite cash, but it's close to cash. We just need to have that, you know, very healthy for the next couple of years as we try to have good percentages. So back on some of these differences in what was budgeted versus actual. So this money here, about $7 million more in state revenue. And that's right, this is where that came from. Enrollment driven because a hundred and eighty kids or so over budget generates a lot of money there. Special ed enrollment was way over budget, so that was 2.5 million. And special enrollment this year is over budget, but not nearly like it was there. We just got a lot of kids, you know, back from COVID, which is adapted, helped us out. Bilingual enrollment was increased. We had a lot of kids in bilingual. But normally they exit that program. So they get into bilingual program, then they exit out because they need the standards and things. But given COVID and some of the COVID years, a lot of kids didn't exit. So they're still, they were still in that program. That enrollment kind of stayed up. Some of those kids didn't go out. Transportation funding, that was funded based on some formulas that, you know, were based on ridership. There wasn't a lot of ridership during COVID. Then that came back up and that went up significantly. So we won't see that type of increase coming in. And then some investment runs. Our investments are at the county. The reg went up probably about one and a half percent. Some of the supplies and materials, you might say, well, you know, we're over budget here, 10.99 budget, 12.8. Couple million dollars generally is some of these costs here, technology. We had opportunities to buy some more technology, curriculum, Kamaikan mascot. That was something that we had to do it, although it's offset with some revenue. So this would be your gym floor, your turf, your, all your uniforms, things like that. Fuel was over budgeted by about $200,000. Although the price of diesel gas definitely, you know, has increased. And then the food service, we serve more meals. That means more supplies, more cost there. And that is offset by revenue from the food service program. And the purchased services, you see that's about $4 million more. And that's some of these programs here. The Running Start enrollment was higher than expected. So there's more money going out to the WSB, CBC. We did put some one-time money back to athletics and extracurricular. Based on the few years that, you know, there was no gate revenue, some things during the, when school wasn't in session and in sports, those programs were hurting a little bit and there was some one-time money put back in those areas. And then here's the mental health tutoring, that was part of the ESR. There's just some contracts we have that we currently have. Special education, there's a few programs there, expensive programs, day treatment program, residential, that were implemented basically after the budget was done. And which were significant, some federal programs. And then our early childhood education assistance program that's referred to as ECAP. That's a program over here by Amstat. There's some portals there. They had ample money to do a few things there. They did some projects around the parking lot and some safety things with sidewalk. So that's kind of the summary there of budget. 85% of the budget here is salaries and benefits. You see, we were under the budget salaries and benefits. Generally, there's a lot of positions that are filled and some things throughout the year. But, you know, it's a lot of money there and sometimes we're a little under, sometimes we're a little close. So then moving on, you know, this is a real high, high level level look here. The material supply operating cost is number here, 44.8 million. We want to remember that and kind of go over that a little bit here. Some of these costs broken down into some categories, some bigger categories, district schools, operations. That's just what it takes to run, you know, this building and school buildings and, you know, set a thing. And instruction is a big one going down to this year. There's a lot of tutoring, communities in school. That's 11 schools, $57,000 a school. It's going to be 11 schools this year at $60,000. The SRO contract, and that we did increase some middle school, you know, happened this year after January. We've already had new contracts. Here's athletics, that includes that one time, like extracurricular, Running Star, and some of that pass-through money. Technology, IT, food service program, fuel again. And then some of our bigger ones that we really have very little control on, property liability insurance, 2.9 million. That went up to 3.56 million this year. We got it down by about $100,000 by changing our deductibles, but it's still just a huge increase. It's, you know, that and utility costs are two of our main ones. Try to do what you can, but it's just 15% of your property liability insurance. Generally, 5% or more of your utility cost of the 3.8 million, 2.1 is electricity and 1.1 is natural gas. And, you know, we try to do it again, it's a million, some of those costs, but it's just, it's just a lot of money. And then we did do some playground site updates, reader boards. Even though, you know, the COVID money didn't directly pay for some of that stuff, it did allow us to knock out a few things. And here's a visual of that. You see some big chunks there on the chart that eat up a lot of that. We're a huge district, $44 million. You know, it's, it's pretty lean really. The state only gives us, gives us about $22 million of this money. And so it's, a lot of this is federal, a lot of food service programs, federal. And some of the teaching money down there is federal. It leaves very little to work. And here's another way of looking at the budget. This is more of a program, programs versus expenditure. So this top part is your local funded, your levy funded. These programs here tap into the local levy dollars. And you see, we're in the hole over 24 million. And that is, you know, we failed the levy, we lost roughly 22 million. So you see that top part. So the bottom part of these programs is supposed to fund, they're set funded. So you said Running Start, money comes in, money goes out. There is a little overhead there that we get. But generally down here in these programs, it's 5.1 million that we can kind of put back up here to support some of the other programs. Some of this does get set aside as carryover and it's used for following year and has their restrictions on how some of this money. So once again, this reconciles back to the previous. And then here's the ESR funding. You see 58.6 million, we haven't received it all yet. You have to spend it first to get the reimbursement. We have about 20 million left, it'll be applied this year. And here's the cost of the stamp down for the last three years. So majority of that money is maintaining staff, lower class size. So maintaining staff basically means the levy failed and we want to keep the staff we have. So this money back to the lost levy. And we do have a lot of lower class sizes. We kept staff on particularly in elementary schools. Classes were very low there. And so we'll be looking at, you know, going back, probably about 20 elementary teachers. We're going to do just, you know, class sizes, 15 kids we kept in the line because of this money. We can't afford it anymore. So we'll be about that. And then we'll be another 10 or so at middle school. We've kept a lot with some of this money and another one. And then you see some of the other mental health tutoring, it would be 2324. As it says here, there's $20 million left. And that's going to be similar, another, actually another slide we cover. We'll get to another slide that kind of shows the 2324 piece of the WSB. And then here's the fund balance, breakout of the 46 million. There's some restricted amounts here. Generally, the 25.9 million and 11.29 is what we're leaving to help us get us through the next few years. Tri-Tech has some money to go to, but it's restricted for both programs. So moving on to 2324 budget, just some information here. Here's the ESR money. You can see we have about 20 million left. And it's going to be applied to staff, again, mostly staff to fill in for the levy. We have the health contract, the tutoring contract. And some other things here, there's some curriculum set aside. We're looking at math curriculum. This one is getting an opportunity to probably try to knock that out. It's very expensive curriculum now, there's books, there's online licenses, and it doesn't get cheap. Here's the maintained staff with us. And then the 2324 budget. So we've been trying to monitor the budget, manage it, try to keep our fund balance up to get us through the next few years. You know, the property tax, the levy failed. And, you know, we didn't come back with a really high amount of levy. It actually was reduced a little bit. So that we're looking through that. Some of the enrollment numbers, we expect to be close to budget. And that's encouraging. We'd like to be over budget, but given, you know, some of the incoming kindergarten, some of that, if we could be at budget, that would be a problem. Special education enrollment is, is up and that should generate some more money. Levy equalization, we'll talk about that. We've been hit hard. The assessed values went up significantly, which has really impacted our levy equalization. I'll talk about that a little later. Transportation funding, it's based on ridership. We won't know until February, March if we get more money than we budgeted. We should, hopefully did maybe 300, 500,000 or more. It's based on a complicated formula, based on inflation. You know, with fuel prices, you could expect that we could get a little more than last year. This is the budget for next. Maybe just to manage the ESR funding and try to get through the next three years. So 2425, we'll do some plumbing work in January. That's when we work on the budget, top of the budget in June. So the issue here is a significant increase in assessed value. This was not really expected, results in a lot of money that we lost. So if you look at this chart here, assessed value expected 13.5 billion, assessed value updated 15.4. Went about $3 million, almost doubled the last couple of years, it's went up significantly. So the money here is down about $935,000. The following year is down almost $2 million. So that basically is $2 million we didn't get. And we have to go through that. So going back to that scenario where, you know, the other side of the state, they levy 10 cents, they get $2 million. We levy 10 cents, we get $500,000. They give us levy equalization for that 1.5. Well, now we can levy 10 cents and we can get that same $2 million. So the state says, you know, get 1.5 million anymore. We need to go raise your levy by 1.5 million to get that. So, so basically every time now we go out for a levy, you know, if we're going to lose $2 million, you've got to raise the levy $2 million just to wash down money. So it's, it's pretty significant. Bottom line is, yeah, we should have raised the levy a whole much more. The assessed value went up a lot and this is where we're at. And we'll be talking more about this in the next couple of months. You know, we do have a large fund balance to get us through some things. And we've got some scenarios. So that's what we've got to go through. And that's why it's important, the staffing and the spending with ESR funds to keep the low class sizes. We have to get that done. So that's where we're at.
Thanks Vic. We'll open it up for questions. Thank you guys for hanging tight till the end of that, so.
So it's a lot of information.
It's important information. I do have, I do have a couple of questions, at least one that I want to ask today. Is there precedent for other districts that have been in the same situation where they've passed the levy and then the property assessment value has grossly affected the rate and put them in the same position before?
I don't know of any. I mean, it probably has been. You know, sense of information in the state, but mostly they're, you know, just kind of working through. See what happens with the legislature. That is January 8th and March 7th. There could be some, some, some new money. But my annual is usually the year, my annual budget's not till next year. Not, we're usually looking at formulas and, you know, putting out new money and things like that. So it's probably a better opportunity then than this year. But we're going to be trying to look at some things and scale the thing if we can. And we kind of talked to OSBI's, we kind of just kind of poked around and said, hey, there's some things here. You know, and one of the problems is, you know, with your levy equalization, if you fail a levy, you don't get any of that money. Where really, if you try to run that levy, you should get that money. You know, it's not, but that's a different scenario. But I can say, give us all the money back for the year. There'll be more information, we'll run scenarios. We were already kind of like last year, like, well, we need to raise our fund balance and get through the next couple of years. And now it's just magnified. It is, you know, it's a, it's a challenge. We're going to be lean. And, you know, the public needs to know that, you know, we're running a good operation. Kids are getting good instruction. You know, it starts now for the next levy in terms of just, you know, your schools are your community. You know, there's a lot going on there. You go out, you see all these functions, particularly in the spring, there's families and it's a gathering. You've just got to get that message going, you know, get support. Even though it's, you know, two or three years away, it's going to be a couple of years away. It's going to come quick. And just try to get through it back on the side.
I just want to make sure I understand completely here. So it sounds like really right now we're running, without the ESR funds, we're running about a $25 million deficit. Is that correct?
Without the ESR funds, we're projected next year budget to be probably maybe $6 million deficit. We'd like to be around $5 at least.
And that's with these projected changes in?
But then the thought the year after that is more like $10 million.
Okay.
You know, and then, so we have so much fund balance that we can get through that. And there'll be some other things that, you know, we might have to do. But, you know, things could change. Enrollment, you know, could change. It could go up and down. And some of those are factored in in terms of some, you know, worst case, type stuff. But, you know, you got the idea.
The number one thing that solves this is what? I mean, obviously enrollment's a big deal, right? I mean, increasing enrollment. But what's, what's the number one, two things that helps us?
The next levies got to be there.
Okay. I know that. Yeah, other than that, I mean.
There's some other scenarios where, you know, right now we're saying, okay, we have a lot of low class sizes. We've kept staff on, you know, very low class sizes. And I think that that is known, that that's, we're going to kind of get after that. And then there's some other things that will be, you know, in the next few years that, you know, can be looked at. Because, you know, okay, things are going, we really need to look at some more things to get a little lean. You know, what can we do? We, there's a lot of positions we don't fill. And even now, there's some, some things we say, hey, you know, let's, you know, that position's coming up. Let's look at it, let's not fill it. And we've been doing that for the last couple of years. But we have to continue to keep doing. And we'll talk a little about that. There's some positions that I know that are worth us to fill and, you know, what's the priority?
Yeah, so I, I think what this highlights is one of the major challenges for our district and all districts across the state is the state's not fully funding basic education. And that's our, you know, we continue, that's a huge, that's like number one in the board's legislative priorities every year is to fully fund basic education, to fully fund transportation, to fully fund special education. Vic highlighted maintenance supplies and operating costs or M. Vic highlighted maintenance supplies and operating costs, or EMOX, and, you know, the money that we receive versus the money that we expend is just, it's a deficit. So it's a continual challenge, and then adding on to our challenge is the local levy issue. So because we don't receive enough money from the state, we rely, as all districts do, on local levies to backfill that. When our levy didn't pass two times in a row, it was, the feedback that we received from the community was, one, around COVID-related items, which, you know, we all know we're not within our purview to control, and the other concern was around tax rates. And so we strive to keep our local tax rates, you know, as low as possible, but the levy that we ran first that failed, you know, wasn't low enough. And so then when we came back out, as Vic mentioned, we lowered that rate, not knowing that those assessed valuations were going to be so increased so drastically. So now we have a situation looking forward where people are used to not paying anything local levy. You get your statement this year, and it's zero. Some people maybe received a refund from their, what's the thing that you, escrow account, yes. And so it's going to be just a double challenge in terms of communication, I think, to our community about why those local levies are so important, why we need them, and then increasing that rate and just being more realistic, I think, and really having, starting to talk about that now publicly. You know, Richland, they have a two dollar and fifty cents levy. That's the limit that we can, that we can go out for, right? It was at one point limited to a dollar fifty as part of McCleary, and then the state recognized that they had not provided enough authority at the local levy for the funds to be collected and raised it to two fifty. So many districts are at that two fifty rate, and we're so far below it, but we're going to need to get there if we want to be able to maintain the great programs and staff, you know, that we have here in our district. I mean, we try to be competitive with our wages, and we use that state IPD money to fund staff salaries, and even that doesn't quite really cover it because we have more staff positions, right, than are actually covered by that IPD. So there's just so many things, but I think the more we can start talking about these things now and hopefully educating the community and just getting the word out, I think the better off we'll be when we go out for the next levy.
I'll touch on, you know, just the materials that's supplied. So the state gave you a three percent increase, so three percent on twenty million dollars, six hundred thousand dollars. You can see our property liability insurance went from two point nine to this year to two point five. So that, you know, it's a, that ate up, you know, all that three percent. The increase in cost is well over three percent, and we've tried to tell the state through correspondence, say, hey, this is not realistic. And the other point is, you know, most of the public, your assessed value went up, they think that we got a lot of money, and we did. We actually lost some because of that levy equalization. So there's just a lot, a lot to unpack over the next couple of years.
And just, I'll just add on to that really quickly, just to remind everyone again, you know, the public approves a levy amount, and then the rate is based on a projection of the assessed valuation of the entire district. So when that assessed valuation goes up, the rate actually decreases. We can't collect more dollars than the voters approve. So if they approved a twenty-two million dollar levy, that's what we can collect. It doesn't vary based on that tax rate.
And so just the fund balance. So generally, we need twenty-five million dollars cash to run this place, and that's what you've got to have in the bank. So this is forty-six million, and so we have five, six million dollar budget for next year, and it goes down. We're trying to maintain this at forty-six million by managing the budget. You know, August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, we want to keep this at forty-six million to get us through the next couple of years. And then if you have six million dollar, then forty, you have ten million, maybe down to thirty. You need twenty-five million, and then the next levy comes. So, you know, that's what we're, you know, to play out.
Was the increase in the property and liability insurance, was that solely due to the increase in the value of the property, or what was the?
No, that's just the insurance people saying, we've got a lot of claims, and here's what we've got to do.
Did we have an increased number of claims in our district, or?
We don't, but we're part of pool. So when pool, you know, something wears up, or there's a lot of lawsuits, you know, against people in schools, and you pay them out, cost them money. But there's other parts of that, too. We get charged for earthquake in some pool, and we're like, hey, you're charging us for everybody else's risk, you know, that's crazy, fix it. So there's some things, we changed some deductibles, since we do have, you know, a healthy fund balance now, we can do that. And there's still a few deductibles that we're going to look at again. But, yeah, it's a huge increase. I think you guys get weekly, once a year, kind of the trend in the insurance. I mean, it's just crazy what's happened over the last seventy years with our rates.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one other comment. You know, sometimes people look at that fund balance, and it seems like such, it is a lot of money, and so sometimes it's hard to help people understand why we need that fund balance and why we, you know, don't want to spend it down. Obviously, there's board policy about fund balance, but it's also because of that fund, healthy fund balance in past years, that we were able to make it through the double levy failure, you know, together with those ESTR dollars relatively unscathed. I mean, I don't think that that was really felt, right, across the district, and I, you know, that's really thanks to Vic and his excellent financial management and, you know, really keeping things efficient. And so I just, I want to recognize Vic because he works really hard, and he's done a really outstanding job over, you know, many, many years, and continuing now. So thank you, Vic.
So, yeah, we are definitely lucky to still have a large fund balance to help us.
I've got one other question really quick, sorry. You've mentioned lowering class sizes is one way to cut cost and to potentially help remedy some of the budget issues. Are there other specific programs? Increasing, oh, excuse me. Increasing, yeah, but, yeah, sorry.
You guys have been at the school like the.
Yeah, changing class sizes is one way.
I really have to take.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, changing class sizes. What other specific programs, are there specific programs or specific areas that you see as potential areas, other areas where we could have cost savings?
There'll be some, I mean, right now, we're focused on some of these ones that regardless of the situation, we would have to get after these ones anyway. There's no way even, forget about everything I said, these low class sizes and things. And we'll still have pretty good class sizes. There are some other areas, and we run really lean. I mean, we'll get you some data, the state comes out with some things in a couple of months, but, so there's not a lot of need on that. I mean, there are some things you can do with, you know, sharing staff between some of the lower enrollment schools. We did a little bit of that when the levy failed, you know, where you go to this school and they do some things, and the other half, you go to another school, and you can do that throughout elementary and middle school. Our high schools are pretty full. You know, they're, luckily, the high school enrollment has kind of popped back for some reason. It's middle school, elementary, we're having a good time. There's, we'll be giving you some information in the next couple of years, here are some things that might not be looking at, but we're being true.
Vic, real quick, the tax rate. So our levy tax rate, if that dips below one fifty, do we still get local equalization, or?
We still do, we just don't get.
Just slim.
Yeah, it's just, like I said, the formula is based on, well, at this point now, we need to raise your levy to make on that.
So at the end of the day, we'll continue to provide solutions, look for ways to be a good steward of taxpayer money, but we also need, coming up, we need the community to really help us out, because we're going to have to come up with some.
Yeah.
Probably higher rates, and we tried to do that. We assessed value dropped their rates significantly, which is costly.
Yeah, I mean, there's just a lot, a lot to it, and so it's on us, and so it's not.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Vic. All right. Up next, we have student goal report. All students are ready for their future, and Lisa will be presenting.
All right, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of our goals tonight. I just want to remind the board that we have three strategic plan goals for our students, and we're going to talk about that top one tonight, that students are ready for their future. So we're going to spend a little time tonight in three areas of preparing our students for their future. We're going to look at our graduation rates. I'm going to talk a little bit about student credit rates, that's coming college credit when we're in high school, and then also talk a little bit about those middle school map pathways and how we're trying to increase rigor and get more kids in higher level now. Okay, we have a goal in Kenilick that we want all of our students to be graduating, and we want it to increase over the next five years, but one percent each year for the next year. So we focus on graduation. This is why we're here. We want to see those kids walking across that stage. We know students with a diploma are going to have a higher income, they have a lot more employability opportunities, and they really need that high school diploma to get going on other programs with their future. So we're going to look at some sets of data, and it's lots of charts. I'm going to try to kind of walk through them a little bit, but we're going to look at two cohorts, and I'm going to really specify, this is a four-year or a five-year cohort. So we're going to start with our four-year cohort. These are students who graduate in four years. We track a goal also for five. We're going to start with four. So I have up here last year's graduation rate on the bottom, I'm sorry, two years ago, twenty-twenty-two, and then this last four-year, twenty-twenty-three's on top. So the big bar is how many of our students graduated by percent, and then the yellow one in the middle, those are students who are continuing. They haven't met all of the requirements, but they are staying enrolled, and they're staying with it. And then the red, our students who are no longer enrolled with us. So I'm going to share some data for that four-year group, just on demographics. There's two bars here. The blue one is twenty-twenty-three, and just, I'm always like, well, what was it like the year before? So we have twenty-twenty-two here as well, if you just want to compare the previous year with this. So these are our demographic groups for the four-year. We also have specific programs that we track, and we have lots of acronyms. So our ELL are, sorry, English language learners. You may also hear multilingual learner. So the way you can read this is for twenty-twenty-three, our English language learners had a rate of sixty-five percent, where non-English language learners were graduating at an eighty-one percent rate. And then you've got our other categories along the bottom as well. And then just kind of keeping track of how we're doing over time, and are we increasing or not? You can kind of see a little bubble went up in twenty-twenty-one. There were some waivers at that time of COVID. You can kind of see we're kind of getting back on the trajectory before COVID, which is really exciting to see that our data is settling out and we can track that. We also like to look at this by school and see how we're doing in our schools and making sure that we're getting our students graduated. Here it is by school. And this one makes me go crazy, but it's over time at the schools. And you can see our three comprehensive high schools are these lines up here that are fairly close together. MCP is this line, and I want to talk about this in just a second with you, and then we've got, we've also got Legacy and Feeding here. This number really surprised me for MCP. When I was looking at the data, I thought, what's that? Doesn't look quite right. And in checking with the principal at MCP, we have an error in our data with the state, and we're working on getting that fixed. This is what's on, this is what the state has right now, but we're working on it. If we're able to fix it, they graduated all of their seniors. So this is the thing, unofficially, this line should be up here for MCP. It was seventeen students, and they all graduated. I think that will raise our four-year graduation rate as well, but we're waiting officially from the state to get that. So that's our four-year data. Our strategic plan has a key performance indicator around the five-year. So we're going to talk a little bit about students who take five years to graduate, and we want to increase that graduation as well. So the class, you'll see they're kind of a year behind because we grew up with that class that started with, they would have graduated in twenty-twenty-two, but they took another year. They're still part of that class. So we took a little bit of a dip last year in our five-year rate. About the same number are continuing, and then we did have an increase in our students who are not continuing as well. So this is broken down in those groups as well, so we can just see it in demographics. Again, with that five-year, also by program participation, and then that trend line as well since twenty thirteen. And then we, over time, at all of our schools as well, the three big high schools or comprehensive high schools are these ones up here. MCP is here, and then we've got Legacy and. Last year, I shared a little bit about, we had a new petition that we added last year called a re-engagement coordinator, and this is someone who's working really hard to find our students. Where are they in getting enrolled in programs? That could be at our high schools. It could be a program called TC Futures, or goes by TC Futures. It's run through the ESD. We have a high school academy at CVC, and we also have a school to success program at CVC. So I wanted to just note that we are engaging enough kids this year. We haven't seen the graduation yet, but we've seen kids engaged and back enrolled in programs. So we had roughly fifty more students enrolled at TC Futures. We've had twenty-five more kids in the high school academy, and then this one is up significantly as well. So we are continuing to grow that. We're also continuing to make sure we are re-engaging and really trying to problem solve it within the district, what kind of barriers we can take away to make sure we can get our students enrolled in programs. I'm going to move on. Do you want to ask questions about graduation now, or?
Yeah, let's pause real quick and see if there are any questions on graduation before we hit a couple of the topics.
I have a question. I don't know if I know how to formulate it. It might take me a minute to get there, but I'm curious about this last slide where you're talking about the re-engagement efforts in these different programs. I'm not familiar yet with these specific programs. So I'm curious to know if you can give us a picture, I know it's not based on data, you may not know that right now, of the types of students that are enrolled in these programs, and I'm curious to know if there's any type of early intervention that we can do to identify these students early on and say, you know, this is probably a good pathway for you, and get them on that path before we lose them and have to re-engage them?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll start, and I think I've got friends who'll. Yeah, absolutely. I'll start, and I think I've got friends who will help as well. So a lot of the times when students are enrolled in these, there, sometimes students are credit deficient. And there's that clock of graduation setting and like, can I get enough credits to graduate? And when that starts happening, we want to always have options for students because we're not going to give up on kids. And so some of these programs have flexible schedules. They have social workers. They are, have case managers that are helping get jobs. And so there's a little bit of a wraparound support and helping. One of them is a GED program as well. To the second part of your question, those early indicators. We have success coordinators at our schools that are looking at students who have an F, have two Fs, have three Fs to get them into tutoring. One of the things, reports we have to give to the state is who's on track to grad, like ninth grade on track. You know, if we start high school on track, we have a better trajectory to finish. So we are looking at those indicators. We're getting kids into tutoring. We're doing home visits and doing what we can to avoid and help.
Along those lines, what are your, what have we found are the biggest indicator reasons for dropout?
That's a good one. They are very individual. Attendance is really hard and it's for a lot of reasons. Students aren't attending, maybe it's hard. And so there's a little bit of, I don't want to go because I don't know what's going on. Maybe it's family commitments and transportation just help as well. So attendance, I would say is a very, very big indicator. And back to that whole starting high school on track. So was the student successful in middle school? Was the student failing student, or failing classes in middle school as well?
And what are, what's, I mean, our goal is to increase it 1%. So we've shown some of the statistics here. What, what specific steps are we doing to drive that increase? And how are we identifying the dropouts? What are we doing to, to decrease our dropout rate? What are we, what are we changing? If we're going to expect changes in our outcomes, what are we changing in our process?
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're just hoping for luck, right?
Well, it's, it's hard. It's hard. We've done tutoring. We've done, we've had success coordinators. We've added success coordinators. It's on the success, in the successful model. So when we see something that works, we do want to incorporate it.
I would just add that, so at each, at each high school, they are very carefully tracking credit accumulation and grades. Midsemester, at semester, especially ninth grade. I mean, actually in all grades, but I was just going to say especially ninth grade because early intervention is so key. You know that if a student starts to fall behind in terms of credit accumulation as a ninth grader, it's really hard to catch up. So summer school is a part of this. Credit retrieval programs that are during the day through use of online learning. There's just multiple different strategies. I would say our wraparound services that we provide in our schools, like communities and schools, helping, like, because they're social workers, right? Helping families and helping students. There's our own school counselors. There's the graduation coordinators, the success coordinators. We've got gear up. If that's a, you know, this could be a whole report in and of itself at some point, if that's something that you want us to really, you know, delve into as well as, you know, we're, we're trying to look at our own alternative programs, alternative learning programs. Meaning, you know, Legacy High School and Phoenix High School and, and because those are part of our overall strategy. If a student's not experiencing success in the big comprehensive high school, is it, is it an engagement? Is it, you know, just like when, when students make college decisions, some students really thrive, right? In a big college campus environment, other students thrive in a real individualized kind of environment. So we've got smaller schools as a part of our, you know, offerings across a continuum. Phoenix is project-based. Students like earn credit in smaller increments. So there's a lot we could talk about and, and maybe that's an area that we could do a, a presentation on at a future date.
I would love, personally love that.
Yeah, I would. I'd really like to see, I mean, like I said, if, if we don't have a specific process that we're improving or changing, we're just hoping that that goal will happen. And I'm not sure that.
Hope's, hope's not a strategy, as we like to say.
The other thing is, is again, I'm, I, I, I know this sometimes, I'm getting in the weeds here, but I like to, like to know details. Is there any way we could get these, these graphs? They're great, but could you also not just provide percentages, but could you actually give us the numbers? So we know, I mean, for example, if it's 100%, but it's only two people.
And that is the case on some of these.
I figured as much, and, and that gives us a better idea of how many numbers. If you're trying to change the dial, we need to know how many, what the numbers are that go with those, those percentages.
Yeah. Yeah, yep. Anything else about graduation?
One other thing, how, how are we utilizing our, specifically, I always mentioned our school counselors in general. How are we utilizing those? Or maybe, maybe better said, with the, the discussion, the deeper discussion. I'd really like to know how we're utilizing our, our school counselors in the preparation for, or in the discussion of, of graduation and beyond. And then the last question I have is, is do we have a way of tracking our kids, what they do after graduation? So once they graduate, do we have a way of following up to see what, how many after four years are, are in a college? How many are in the trade? How many are in, do we have a way of tracking them? So we can see real success of our, how well we're doing in actually preparing our kids for the future beyond just graduation?
I'm, I'm taking the notes for the future presentation. So yeah, we will get all of that included.
Perfect. Or, do, do we have a way right now or no?
We have limited ways. There's a education research, the acronym is ERDC, and it's educational research data. Something I can send the board the link. We can look at, at our students who graduated to see their college going and college sustaining. Rates by two and four-year if they went to Washington State colleges. So there's, there's some data sets that are available to us that we have. What we don't have is a really good way of tracking every student, like within our system to see what they did next. But we do have some data and we can, we can certainly share what we do have.
Oh, perfect.
Okay, keep moving. I have some notes as well. So the, the second part of my presentation tonight is to talk a little bit about dual credit. Or receiving college-level courses and earning those credits while in high school. So we want, we have a goal to increase this over the next four years. So dual credit, sometimes you don't hear the term dual credit, but you might hear advanced placement or AP. That is a type of dual credit because the student can take an assessment and earn college credit. Or international doctoral laureate is another program in the Kenilic schools, at Kenilic High School. And that's to do an exam as well to earn college credit. Running start is when our students go to the community college and participate in classes and earn those credits. At CBC, WCU, and then also towards their diploma. College in the high school, our courses taught in high school. And it's approved through a college and they earn credit as well. And then we have a lot of articulation. Mr. Randall from Tri-Tech talked a little bit about CTE dual credit. Our career and technical education programs have articulation agreements with colleges. And if you take this course, you'll get so many credits at Central or at CBC. So you'll, we'll see those acronyms, but those are all types of dual credit available in our Kenilic schools. We think this is a great opportunity. It gives kids confidence, like, hey, I can handle college coursework. Okay, maybe I wasn't thinking about that. Now I can. It's a way to save money as well. Because students right now, they changed the rule that all college and the high school courses are free this year. So it's, it's a great opportunity for our students. It also increases rigor and exposes students to higher critical thinking. So over the course of the last three years, we've kind of been about the same in the amount. We went up a little in 2022 and then we're back down to 86% this last four-year. And our students earning a dual credit by the time they're in 12th grade and graduating. How that breaks down, students in 10th grade, for example, you can see a lot of these are those CTE or career and technical courses that they're taking at the high school. So, and I can give you a sheet of all of the classes that have this if you'd like to see it. But the yellow is CTE. You can also see a lot of them are for AP and running start. You can see running start really increases in 12th grade here. So that's kind of how it is, breaks out of all the different types of dual credit opportunities. Got beat really fast after all that graduation. What questions do we have about dual credit?
I have a question, and this question is one of the most asked questions that I've taken in regards to this subject. Is, is sports and PE? You know, it's, can sports be a dual credit? You know, I mean, these kids are putting in a time, they're every single day after, you know, and, and then they still have to do PE, right? And, and so it sounds, it seems funny. I know that I was in college. I got a full ride scholarship. And I was playing in college and I still had to do PE. And it was kind of silly, I thought, because I'm like, you know, like, you know, so, and I think the same thing on a high school level, right? You're in high school and you're, you're, you know, it's like you're, it's an additional thing you're doing. Also, my, I have questions like, does that, I mean, increase your school spirit and your pride? And are you, are you more active and are you more, you know, and that exercise, that helping you health-wise, which also helps your brain function? And then, and also, you know, do our athletes or people who do extracurricular sport activities, not just athletes, but are they graduating at a higher rate? So I'd be curious to know, like, what does that look like, you know? If they are, then that would be a good argument to say, okay, well, let's see if we can dual credit some of this, so.
The dual credit has some specific guidelines with alignment to the college articulation. So I don't know that dual credit is meant, but we do have competency credit for participating in sports. And we've updated that guidance. So if it's a direct sport, a school sport, that, that is allowable for the fitness part of that.
Just a clarifying question. So I, are you asking if we have PE courses? That if you take the PE course in high school, you can also earn college credit?
No, I know this is slightly different, but I know, I know, but it's, it's sort, I, I bring it in dual credit because it's almost like, I know the dual credit. And this, this means high school and college, right? But I'm referring to, and like, almost a stretch of that explanation. Or maybe, maybe dual credit's the wrong word, but either way, like, a kid is doing one activity and getting credit for two things. I know it's not college. I realize that. But, but I just get this question asked so much, and I just, you know, love for you guys to answer it out loud, you know? PE, you know, if, if a kid's doing three sports, why can't those sports be a PE credit? Right? And that, that also gives them that flexibility when those kids are starting to get behind, right? I'm behind and now I don't have time, you know, but now I do. Now I can actually take, take a sport and catch up.
The other part of our PE is there are some fitness and health standards that have to be, so there isn't that much that students have to take.
But is that actually giving them a PE credit?
Yeah.
Or is it waiving?
They earn credit.
I think this.
A full credit?
This PE. This, I think this will be an overall conversation with 24 credit.
For sure, definitely.
Where it would fit in more along the line versus the, the dual credit.
Yeah.
So if we wanted to discuss the overall credit situation, that would be PE involved.
I think, I think your question, I understand.
It's a little misplaced with the conversation. I got you.
It's less about dual credit and, and more about how, what's the flexibility within the 20, 24 credit requirement?
And, 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 well, I got thinking about this in fairness on your last thing, when we were talking about like kids, you know, they start getting behind. And now they have no, not a lot of wiggle room to make up anything. And now, right? So, so now it's like, well, I can play, do a sport, which helps me in other things anyway. And then that gives a little flexibility. Now I can actually take a, a science class that I did poorly in or something. Now we can, right, we can catch them up in that way.
Absolutely.
So. I also, I also am not convinced that our counselors understand this. Because I've had a lot of kids, including my own kid, come back to me and saying, ah, the counselors are telling me something different. The counselors are telling me something different. So I'm not sure that, that they are preaching that same message.
So let's, we'll talk a bit, credit stuff for our future meeting.
Okay.
And then we can talk to that.
With regards to the AP, similar to my other question, what are we doing specifically to encourage the, taking either AP classes? Particularly, I would say, AP classes, it looks like we're doing a pretty good job with, as a percentage, most of those percentages. But again, I'd love to see the actual numbers here of how many credits are being earned for each of these. So we can see, you know, how many of our ninth graders are taking AP classes? How many of our 10th grade, 10th are taking AP classes? I know running start really starts in, in 11th grade, but, so we can see what those numbers are. But what are we doing to encourage those kids to take those dual credit or college-level courses in high school? What do, to change the dial? How are we, how are we using our student counselor, our counselors to do that? Do you know what we're doing right now?
I can share a little bit.
Yeah, please.
Yeah. It starts in eighth grade when we've got parent meetings and to go into ninth grade. For the schools, the principals are leading those and talking about these opportunities. It is in the course of study handbook. There's a full page about dual credit for all of the high schools. I know Kenilic High School made a full booklet about dual credit. Michael High School does a PSAT testing day. And in doing that, that's in 10th grade, from that data, they're giving AP indicators. And they're inviting students to sign up and go into AP. They're not relying on the students saying, I don't want to take an AP class. They're saying, you need to take this. You are the right kid for this. So we're using that data as well to get more kids in. Also with AP, there, we don't have to direct with it. Anyone who wants to take it can try it. We know the more kids who can take it, the better. Even if they don't take the test, I mean, that's where they get the credit. They're getting exposed to higher rigor, critical thinking, they're learning, they're just, it's more rigorous.
Well, and our school district is, I mean, as you look at some of the national grading systems, they look at how many AP classes kids have taken, what percentage are passing the test. So having the kid take the class and not take the test doesn't make a lot of sense. We should be encouraging these kids to take this test. I guess part of my concern is, is I'm a parent of several kids in the high, or a couple of kids in the high school. I have a lot of friends that have kids in the high school, and there is very little incentive and push for a lot of those kids to be taking AP classes. I, you know, talking about cost savings in college, things like that, yeah, that's helpful. But, but even just as colleges today look at kids' transcripts, they're looking at how many classes, AP classes they're taking. And that's one area where I think we need to really look at expanding our, our offerings of AP classes and, and really incentivizing students to take AP classes. Beginning as a, you know, I think in their freshman year, they have one or two they can take. AP Geography, I know is one of them. But really pushing kids to take college-level courses because it gets them better prepared for college. Whether they're doing running start or whether they're taking an AP class, it prepares them for their future if they're planning to go to college. And, and I, I mean, I think we should really have a very specific plan on how we're going to incentivize students to do that.
Absolutely. I think we need a little bit better numbers, just so we can see reality of it.
I was going to say, in, in my experience as a running start student, I definitely don't feel like there is much encouragement towards that in general. It was more something that I seeked out on my own. And I feel like that's a pretty general consensus with students that I know. I don't think it's very encouraged. I mean, it's, it's, I think they've talked about it before, but it's not like a.
Where do you wish that would come from?
I think, I mean, probably the counselors. I think, I, I'm sort of recalling sophomore year, they, they showed us a few of our options, but it was like a quick PowerPoint in an English class instead of like them seeking us out to see if that's something we want to do or anything like that. So.
Did you ever have current running start students come and present?
Did you ever have current running start students come and present to you in your freshman and sophomore classes and say, this is what my experience is and I like it for these reasons?
Now, with the international Baccalaureate, there is because, I mean, it obviously is easier. There's students in the school that are doing that. It's we that is very encouraged in Kenmore High School, but specifically running start. I it's not treated the same definitely at all. In my experience.
I I guess my experience back talking earlier today with a a parent on a lot of this this stuff, I feel like parents a lot of times aren't aren't informed very well. And maybe we can look at better ways of encouraging parental information and and maybe dual partnership with parents, teachers and their counselors, particularly early as they're getting in, so they're getting a lot of one-on-one support. Because otherwise, parents learn this stuff and like I said, somebody was telling me earlier today, you almost just make a lot of mistakes with your first kid and hopefully on your second kid, you've learned and and can make up for those mistakes. That I I think that's that's not how the system should be. And and I think particularly, you've got highly motivated students like yourself. But there are other students, particularly as you can see on the graduation statistics at a couple of these schools, that maybe don't have the social support and don't have parents that know how the system works, knows the importance of an AP class. And so they're going to inevitably not do those things because they don't understand the importance. And why would you take something that looks really hard if you don't know why? And so I think we need to really focus on a program. How are we going to get kids incentivized? Sorry, I'm taking too much time here. I I get passionate about this stuff.
Can I just add one more thing really fast? I do see the increase in running start students in twelfth grade, and I'm sure that is for many reasons. I do think that also just has to do with those juniors seeing their friends doing running start, which they didn't know maybe was a good option for them, and they see other people succeeding and then they want to do it. So I think having students coming into schools and talking about running start as well as other programs.
Like try to, you know, yeah.
Would largely affect that stuff.
Let's kick off the last and final section.
Um good. Uh finally, we want to talk about algebra, especially at the middle school level. We want our students prepared. We've been talking about starting high school on track to graduate. Um and we want to increase the number of students earning high school algebra credit before they start high school. So we hope this on algebra is often known as like a group to higher level math. We have to have algebra to do the other maths. Um and we want a strong algebra foundation, even if we have to go a little bit slower to build a good foundation. Algebra and algebra, they can start since elementary school. And we have to build that foundation even before we get into algebra classes. We know that understanding algebra puts students on track for college success and when ready. It's always a prerequisite for higher level math. And we know students who continue and take that second year of algebra are really likely to continue on after high school. So we are tracking our students in eighth grade and we had a lot of focus last year that I want to share about that. You can see that we kind of had a dip this last year of the students earning um an algebra credit in eighth grade. Or it could have been seventh grade as well, at least before high school. So last year, our middle school math teachers and our high school math teachers worked really hard on those algebra standards. They wanted to make sure we had consistent courses across the middle schools. We found that some of our middle schools were teaching different classes and were going at different paces. And we needed to get alignment and consistency. So our our middle school math teachers worked really hard on that. We want to make sure our math classes are being called the same things and that we had a common district pathway with guidelines of who should be in what type of math classes. I'm gonna show you in just a minute. We want to make sure that algebra is being taught in our schools and we want to say algebra is algebra. That and that force naming concern I brought up. We also want to make sure students are getting that strong foundation. We have had some challenges in the past of the high school teachers saying they they aren't ready. They have to retake it. And we don't want students to be taking algebra when they're in high school. We want to make sure we get it right in the middle school and even before then. So very important work happened. Here's here are those pathways, and this is the document that was created last year. I'm gonna walk you through it a little bit. For sixth graders, typical sixth grader would sign up and be in sixth grade math. We'll call it math six, math six. We have one year accelerated, which is math seven. And this would be a sixth grader, but they would be in math seven. So that's one year accelerated. We also have two years accelerated, which would be pre-algebra. And we do have very unique situations where we do have maybe a sixth grader who's ready for algebra. And we'll look at that in case by case paper. So that really sets you up on a trajectory as you go to seventh grade. But it's not it's not set in stone. So if the say sixth grade student takes math six and then in seventh grade takes math seven, and that seventh grade teacher says they get it, they're ready, their foundational skills are good, they will recommend them to go to algebra one. And that's based on the math teacher recommendations. Same here, if a student maybe starts one year ahead or one year accelerated in sixth grade, they could be here and the teacher's like, they've got it, it's solid, they're gonna go to algebra. And so we do have these little arrows to show that we will move them around if the student. So um as a sixth grader comes in, they could be in sixth grade math, seventh grade math, or pre-algebra, which typically are eighth grade math. And that kind of sets them up to follow these tracks um in math. I want to show you some data of how we're enrolling kids because it's really increased this school year. Kids moving up in those levels based on these criteria. So I've got two years here, so we have year twenty-two, twenty-three, and then this current school year. So you we want this column to go down. This is sixth grade, just thinking about sixth grade. So you can see last year Schmuck had all her kids in sixth grade math. But this year, they have eighty-eight percent. And then they've got some that a lot of percent that are accelerated. And then they've got one percent that are fifth, two percent are accelerated. Or does that track?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then so you can see here, we do have that exception student here at Highlands who came in ready for algebra. And they are in algebra um this year. So that's for seventh grade, oh, sorry, sixth grade. In seventh grade, so you wouldn't have math six, we would just have seventh grade now. And you can see there's a little bit of a bump up in our seventh graders who are in pre-algebra, also algebra. And then we do have a few students that are in geometry as well. Back to like, what is the number? I can provide those if you'd like to see them. This is about the kids. This happy percent math. And then in eighth grade, you can see the number of kids that are in a typical eighth grade pre-algebra class. They were named different things. I just lumped them together because they were pretty much the same class. So this year, sometimes it was called pre-algebra, sometimes it was called foundations. Now we're all calling it pre-algebra. Algebra, and then you can see how many kids are in geometry. And then you do have a few kids going to the high school for that second year of algebra. It says algebra three because each semester has a number. So that first year is algebra one, two, and the second is algebra three. So I wanted to share kind of how that sets students up in high school. So if we have an eighth grader that takes pre-algebra, this is typically their pathway for math in high school. And that's how they get their required math credits. If a student's able to take algebra in eighth grade, they're they're essentially a year ahead. And it opens up some advanced math classes in the high school of cap pre-calculus, or they might even go into stats possibly. Usually it's pre-calculus. If they take geometry in eighth grade, it really opens the door to a lot of different options up here to go deeper into calculus and so have them for statistics. We start running out of some options if we are taking that second year of algebra in eighth grade. Not always, but sometimes we start running out of what we can offer. Right now, statistics is one of those high school, but it's. So that was that's a little bit about those math pathways and that work. I do want to share that we are looking just as far as math goes, we are looking at a new K-five math curriculum this year. We're in the middle of reviewing for adoption because we want to make sure we're sending those books to middle school, which are like math foundational skills. And so we're midway through that process right now. We're still working with our middle school math teachers. So middle school class periods are about nine, even shorter than the high school. So for those high school courses taught in the middle school, we have less time and we also have middle schools. So it is hard to cover this main amount of material at at the high school level. And we're really working hard to make sure we're covering those essential standards. And so we continue to work on identifying those standards and making sure we're moving these strong teachers.
Thanks, Alyssa. Any questions for math?
Yeah. You're just gonna hate us. Josh and Nari are down here.
Sorry.
Sorry, I don't, we're we're learning a lot. So I I like the parent that presented today have a very similar question. My older children had the opportunity to go through what I'm pretty sure was an honors algebra class when they were in middle school. And my students would not have been ready at sixth grade to move to math seven or definitely not to pre-algebra, algebra, but they were ready to move at a quicker pace than some of their other sixth grade counterparts. And that gave them an opportunity with one student in particular, she made it through much more of the math book than I'd ever seen any of my children make it through before, which meant that she was able to cover the topics in those last the last part of the textbook, and she was better prepared the next year. She's my strongest math student. And so it I I guess I just need some clarification. Do we have honors math classes in the middle school? Because I didn't see those mentioned.
That 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 word's not in the front of the list, but this is two years, this is two years ahead. And it it would be, I I think sometimes determine honors student would be taking that course. But we want to label what the content was in the course.
So under so is it that my child, although it was called honors sixth grade math, it was really pre-algebra? Is that what you're saying?
If it was two years advanced, um yes.
I have no idea. I just know it was called honors something or other and that she went faster than the other classes.
Yeah. When I talked with some of our middle school principals, they they told me that the content was the same. They're using the same like honors algebra textbook as the high school. So they're they're giving those same types of questions. And I I even dug a little bit in my book last year to see how many chapters were covered. And then for those, I I could see work through like chapter eleven covered at the middle school. It it I think it's hard to cover the exact same amount as a high school class, just because middle school's different. But these are accelerated classes. I guess they can move faster than a regular grade level course.
I I have a couple of questions and concerns. So one of my big concerns here is is it looks like it's very difficult. So if someone starts at math six, we don't really have a pathway for them to accelerate to an easy pathway to accelerate to geometry while they're in middle school. If if they start at math six, they're done. There's no way they're getting to geometry in eighth grade.
Yeah, that is probably an accurate statement. We typically have one class of geometry at a couple of our middle schools and we don't have it at a couple of our middle schools.
And and even so, it seems like, looking at it, your predominant pathway, if you start in math six, is you're gonna end up in pre-algebra. That's the predominant pathway, and there's no way for a kid to easily excel past that. So if if he does exceptionally well in math six, or are there summer courses available where if a kid wants to get on track to take algebra? I mean, I guess I look at this and our goal is to try to increase it, increase the number of kids taking algebra. But we haven't, we haven't improved a pathway to get them to algebra.
Well, um.
Yeah, so I mean, I I I think our our goal is for the number of students to accessing algebra in middle school to increase because they're ready for algebra.
Right.
Like, we could, and I know you're not suggesting this, like, we could meet that goal by putting a bunch of students into a class that they're not ready for. So that's where the elementary math curriculum and that adoption really comes into play as a strategy for naturally, you know, increasing that readiness and and access.
Seven when they come in as a sixth grader.
Correct. And and I think the other thing that I don't know if you're you could speak to a little bit, Alyssa, is how it's determined, like where you're placed. Because it's really what we're wanting to do is place students appropriately, but prepare students to be placed in the highest level math possible coming into middle school.
And I can see, I mean, you can see some, like it says on those placement criteria, but the map testing, I mean, the map testing is going to be reflective of the class they just took, right? So if they're in math six, they're obviously, not obviously, but likely not to perform as well on their map testing as if they're in math seven, right?
The math, the math test levels and should reflect what level the student is at. I I get you're saying like if a kid is has rigor and is being challenged, they're gonna.
Right. So I I and I guess I just, we're setting a goal to improve, but we've got these pathways that are delineated. And there's not a lot of easy ways for kids to accelerate. And and one of the things I think that's that's critical, whether it's an honors class or something, we need ways where we're making sure that our spec special needs groups, which in this case, the special needs or the the accelerated learners have easy avenues of accelerating, because some of these kids, I mean, middle school is a time of significant psychological development. And some of these kids will appear very middle of the road in sixth grade. And in seventh grade, all of a sudden, they have enormous ambition to suddenly do well in school and change their behavior. But if we've locked them into a pathway, they can't change their behavior. And if kids are accelerating, we want to make sure that they can accelerate to to really become successful. And and that's my concern here. We don't have avenues to help them accelerate.
Now, just to ask on that, though, now you mentioned our our math, math teachers are able to say like, this student
Yeah.
has by far met X and can recommend to move.
Yeah, and that's why we have these little arrows here. So say you come in and you have a sixth grade year and you're getting used to middle school. And then you and then developmentally and whatnot, you are clicking along in seventh grade. The teacher can move it. Absolutely.
Are there fundamental skills you need in pre-algebra to make that jump over to algebra?
Well, they they some of these things are spiraled. So if they're doing well, they'll.
Alyssa, one question I have, is it possible also from math six to for that little arrow to go to pre-algebra, right? Or from pre-algebra to geometry, right? Or.
Move from that pre-algebra to geometry.
But they could go from math six and say a sixth grader comes in, they're they're excelling. Could is that something that happens? You say, yeah, let's bump you to pre-algebra.
They will just say this is not the right one, second quarter, let's start you here.
But not never to pre-algebra? Too big of a jump?
Uh if they're misplaced and when they're in class and the students like this is not, they will, they will have that conversation.
So really, the arrows are there where kids can be bumped up during the school year or or within there. If they're accelerating, they can accelerate.
And then they have, we get communication from parents as well and wanting to know why they're in those classes. And we sit down and we look at the force together and see if it's the right fit. It's always easier to try a little bit harder and bump down as well. Now in middle school, that's a little tricky because there's a lot of confidence building and going on. So middle school, middle school needs to come up.
So to go back to the honors, because I want to make sure we're addressing that concern. From what I'm understanding, really, we've done away with honors in the terms of having two math seven classes, but one is an accelerated version of math seven. So they're just getting a little bit more math seven. We've done away with that. Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
So then really the parents have the option of either math seven or getting their kid into pre-algebra? Those are the two options?
Yes. Sometimes in a middle school schedule, depending on what classes and elective students are taking, the makeup of classes might be different. So if I, if I'm in pre-algebra and music, I might be in a lot of classes, it tracks a little bit, as much as we don't want it to. So sometimes classes might feel a little different, but they are doing the same. Does that make sense? Or did I make it more confusing?
I'm not sure.
I didn't understand that last statement.
So in, you're in different classes in middle school. But I, if I'm a student and I get to select like an elective or maybe two electives and I'm qualified for this math class, I have, the system to build a schedule flows into different classes. There are times when if you're a high math kid, you have, you have music as well, it bumps you and it seems like there's a certain very high math kid all in the same math class. Do you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, it happens sometimes. We try to spread them out as we can, but sometimes based on selection, because students are choosing their classes, it can, it can kind of make the makeup of the class seem like it has higher.
So Alyssa, to that point, if, if there's a class with predominantly, you know, a higher percentage of higher performing students, would that teacher then cover more chapters or potentially be?
Well, they might, but they, if they're going through it, we really want to make sure they're covering the standards and they are supposed to be covered in these, just that when they get through those.
One thing I think, you know, and we can have a further conversation, is really in all classes, differentiation is, is a piece of what we want our teachers to do. Because teachers are going to be teaching a group, doesn't matter if it's math or English, that you're going to have kind of a continuum of learners. There's the standards that you're teaching that are part of the class and you might have students who need, it's really the four PLC questions that we've talked about, professional learning communities. What do we want our students to learn? What do we do with the students who aren't learning and how are we intervening for those students? And what are we doing for the students who already know and can do? And how are we challenging them? And that's, that is a challenge for teachers to be able to differentiate like that within a classroom when you've got different levels. But it is something that we expect them to do because there's sure higher level courses and those kinds of things, but there's still the differentiation needed within the classroom. So one thing I think we can talk more about is, you know, if, if you've got a group of students within the algebra one class who are needing a faster pace or, you know, how can we use differentiation to go farther with those particular students or push those students to the, to a higher level?
To accommodate their specialties.
Their needs, just like we would for, we've got students that are struggling, the answer isn't necessarily bump them back, you know, to sixth grade math or something like that. It's like, well, what, you know, they, they were placed in this course, they've had the requisite learning, what do we need to do to help them, you know, build the skills so they can be successful in the course? So I think there's that aspect of this that we just need to talk more about based on this conversation and feedback.
The final question I had was just, you had mentioned that algebra in middle school doesn't cover everything that algebra in high school covers. What are they getting left out because, did I hear you correctly on that or?
Well, you probably did. So I'm glad you asked directly to clarify that. There, here's our two different books. There's one called Big Ideas and there's one called Lineal Algebra. The honors high school classes use lineal algebra. Our algebra class in middle school uses lineal algebra. Algebra in the high school uses, the regular algebra uses Big Ideas. So there's a difference right there. When I, when I met with that family, they said that in the high, in the high school, algebra covers through chapter eight where honors goes to twelve. They are able to go through, go through. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, so I guess that leads to another question. Why do we have two different books?
I am still figuring that one out.
Because, because it seems to me that we should be teaching, I mean, we want to standardize the algebra program.
Yeah.
And we need to make sure that what they're getting in eighth grade is the same thing they'd be getting in high school, so they're not, they're not deficient anywhere. But then on top of it, why is, yeah, why are they two different things in high, high school? Just have everybody have the same one?
Let me call it over on that one.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry to ask more questions. You've done a great job, by the way.
No, I appreciate the questions. Are there any more?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you Alyssa. So we're going to take a five minute recess. We will, we'll be back to pick up at eight ten.
All right, we're gonna call the meeting back to order. Next on the agenda is financial literacy and Dr. Pierce will be presenting.
So the purpose of this presentation tonight, the board might recall that we were scheduled to have a study session to talk about this. And then we didn't have a forum that evening, so that's why it's not on the agenda. But really, tonight is just about kind of basic awareness. There's no decision or anything. I just want to provide you with an update and get any initial interest or input you have on this topic. So we spend a couple of minutes talking, sharing some background information and just rationale for why we're talking about financial literacy. Give you some information on our current situation. Quickly cover for graduation requirements and where we do offer financial literacy learning currently in the system. And then talk about the work that we're doing to look at the potential of a post-graduation requirement. So we're all really familiar with our mission and essentially that's to ensure that students are prepared for post-secondary education work in life. We have a learner profile that was developed a couple of years ago to help clarify the digital citizenship and employment skills, life skills and social skills that we want our students to graduate with. Cultivator is one of the things in that learner profile and there is an aspect of financial literacy. We want students to be able to apply financial and digital literacy and time management skills. There was actually a bill that came out of last year's legislature that requires school districts to adopt one or more goals for expanding financial education instruction to students, and we do have those goals for this year. And you know, this whole topic of financial literacy and the importance of it is one that's, you know, high on people's radar statewide, nationwide. We've got a student here in County School District who's a student at South Ridge High School. He's also a member of the superintendent's student advisory council. The board has heard from him in the past. I think he was planning to be here tonight when I talked to him earlier. His name's Ashley Joshi. He's been working, he's worked with board members, legislators, he's working with Representative Rude right now. This is a picture of him with the chamber, I believe. Here's a picture of Ashwin with state superintendent Chris Reickdahl. Because he's a passionate advocate for financial literacy and started a club at South Ridge High School. So anyway, all of these things together are why we're talking about and looking at financial literacy. There are state standards, K-12 for financial education, and these are the big six competencies that financial education standards address. In terms of those goals that we set this year as a result of the legislation that passed last year, as part of our strategic plan for this year, we are continuing to provide opportunities for our students to take a high school personal finance course. And we're conducting a review and will ultimately make a recommendation to the board regarding implementation of a personal finance graduation requirement, financial literacy graduation requirement. So that's really, you know, that work is in process and what we're recording on a little bit tonight. Just for some background information, there are graduation requirements that are set by the State Board of Education. Those are statewide requirements. Some of them are credit-based, some of them are non-credit-based. Graduation requirements are set for students when they enter ninth grade and they can't, you can't add to them once a student is in like the sheet ready for graduation. And so they can't really be modified after that. Things can't be added. So when it comes to current state graduation requirements, the whole idea behind the graduation requirements is that they're meaningful, achievable and flexible. And there's a credit-based aspect to graduation requirements. There's a high school and beyond plan that's intended to help students early on be thinking about what they want to do in their future and tailor their course-taking pathway to that goal. And there's a graduation pathway component as well. When it comes to credit requirements, these are those credit requirements. And they were mentioned a little bit earlier. These are the 24 credits that students are required to earn and in what subjects. But there's a lot in the additional information column here. There is quite a bit of flexibility within this 24-credit framework. That's not really the topic for tonight, but it can be certainly a future topic of discussion. But these are the 24 credits that are required for graduation. These are the graduation pathway options. Students need to meet one of these graduation pathway options to graduate. The current pathway options are on the top part of this slide. And then there is a performance-based option that's in development at the state level right now. So there's some information on the slide about that. There is an opportunity for local school districts to also have locally determined requirements. You can't take away from those state requirements, but you could add to or make local modifications. So for example, in Kenwood School District, we have a computer competency requirement. It's been in place for about 20 years. And it's not, it's not a course requirement, but the vast majority of students meet the competency through taking courses, computer applications or computer science courses. The students can pass an assessment and meet the competency that way. And that's how that requirement was established. In Pasco School District, they do have a financial literacy requirement. What they've done is said that 1.0 of that required career technical education or CTE credit has to be financial literacy and the other 0.5 can be any other CTE course. Richland School District currently has a financial literacy requirement as well. They've essentially carved it out of the elective, so you have to four elective credits. In Richland, 0.5 of those has to be careers in financial literacy and then the other 3.5 elective credits can be whatever electives. When it comes to financial literacy learning in our school district, we do offer courses that contain the financial literacy standards. There's financial algebra and that's a cross-credit in class. So students earn both CTE and math for that. There's some financial math courses that are not CTE that are in place. So many, many students take this as their third math credit because there's some flexibility with the third math credit that you need for graduation. Then there's just some CTE courses like Life 101 that addresses financial literacy learning. And we've got a couple of online offerings through Endeavor and so forth where it's an Apex online course. When we look at our data for the last two years of graduating classes, with about 30% of our students who are taking a course that includes financial literacy standards. But again, we don't currently have a requirement for it. These next couple of slides I'll go through quickly. It just shows the enrollments data for the last couple of years in terms of semester one and semester two, how many students were enrolled in these courses by high school. The first slide is 21, 22. This is 22, 23. And this is where we are currently this school year. The other, another just piece of background information to keep in mind is that when it comes to those graduation pathways, one of the pathway options is a CTE pathway. And because we have a computer competency requirement and many, most students take computer application, which is a CTE course to meet that requirement, they then end up using that as the first part of their CTE sequence, which then meets their graduation pathway. Just information to keep in mind. Beyond high school, we do offer some opportunities for students to learn financial literacy in middle and elementary. For our elementary schools who have junior achievement, there's financial literacy components in junior achievement. In our middle schools, we have STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Math, Career Labs, and those include a financial, personal finance module. And then, of course, I mentioned clubs and we've got those financial learning clubs in place at South Ridge High School and also Commite High School. And that's another opportunity for students to learn. It's not connected to a class. One other just piece of information, because districts are required to have goals, we did get a little bit of state funding to help support our goals of about 750 per FTE, full-time equivalent for this year. So that's kind of just current status where we are, a little bit of background about graduation requirements. And again, kind of why we're looking at this and doing this review. So any questions so far?
So as we mentioned to our newly-minted legislative representative, that House Bill 1915 has been put in the hopper, which will make financial literacy a requirement.
That's from Skylar.
What was it, 1915?
Yeah, HP 1915.
1950.
So Representative Rude put that in, has good bipartisan support for this. So hopefully be able to push that through.
And I believe it's accurate that Ashley's working pretty closely.
We've got him matched up.
Is that, would that be a requirement for a class, like a credit?
It would be, it would be, it would be required for graduation.
Okay. Specific credit, half-credit or something?
Yeah, it's all of the, I'm just trying to read as quick as I can. It would start like in the 25, 26 or 26, 27 school years, which is a couple of years out here, it'll take time to power up. But it is something that would then be necessary for graduation.
And it doesn't specify curriculum. It just said, school districts can identify their own curriculum, but they're new to me.
I believe so, yeah. I'm trying to read quickly. But it is out there.
And I actually haven't had a chance to read that in depth either, so I need to do that because obviously we want to keep an eye out on what's happening at the state so we don't do something that's counter to it or, you know.
Yeah.
But even before that bill got put in the hopper, we were having this conversation. So I can still share with you kind of where we are with the conversation right now. We're just getting input and ideas brainstorming from different groups. When we thought about our implementation timeline for this, I think it lines up with potential state implementation timeline because again, you have to notify incoming ninth graders what their graduation requirements are. So the soonest we could implement something would be for the class of 2028. That would mean though, we would need to notify students and families in February because that's when registration starts. So it's a really tight timeline. So we're, you know, if we do something, we're recommending that we consider implementation for the class of 2029, unless the state comes and pushes it up, you know, says for the class of 2023 or something like that. But we wouldn't want to implement for the class of 2028, it's just too soon. Okay, so we kind of mapped out when we started this work, just, you know, how we want to tackle this. And we started, we just wanted to build awareness with different groups, like our middle and high school principals, with our superintendent's student advisory council. You know, we are in a brainstorming phase right now, just what ideas do people have? What do our students think? What do our principals think? What do our CTE teachers think? We want to do some surveying when we get a little farther down the road and ultimately make a recommendation that would come sometime, we think, between January 2024 and November 2024, because we're also wanting to watch what's happening in the legislature. So so far, what we've gathered from different constituent groups is a desire for flexibility. While there's current flexibility in the 24-credit framework, there's not a ton of flexibility. So any added requirements adds constraints to students and impacts choices and things like that. So our interest would be in ensuring that there's some flexibility from some groups, but other groups have expressed concern about too much flexibility because then does that not make it meaningful learning? If there's not uniform approach system-wide, would we be able to assure that students are really learning the core competencies and the standards that we want them to learn? Everyone wants to avoid creating some kind of hoop or compliance thing that students have to check off and we don't want our students to feel like it's not important. So that's important to us. There's been kind of feedback on both sides of whether it should be a credit requirement or not a credit requirement. But some concern about layering another requirement on top of our current computer competency requirement, but also recognition that those skills that students are learning in computer applications are also life and employability skills and important learning as well. And everyone wants to ensure that there's enough time for really intentional implementation. So I think that's a shared interest. As we've been having these conversations, you know, some, some people are saying, hey, like we could make it some kind of non-credit requirement. Some ideas have been like, could we create a menu of options? So students could take one of those options and meet the requirement. Some, some ideas have been, maybe we should look at that current computer competency requirement and re-imagine that course to be focused on digital literacy and financial literacy, maybe a semester and a semester. Or more of an adulting kind of 101 course that could include some of the college and career literacy things. Some of the things maybe that were talked about tonight in terms of where students learning about dual credit and all of these kind of options. And maybe that could be woven into some sort of new class. But again, not wanting to water down the computer skills. So that's just a little bit of a challenge. And then in one group, there was an idea like maybe financial literacy could be the content for learning the computer application. So again, lots of brainstorming ideas, nothing set in stone. What we did today, Mallory mentioned it with the superintendent's student advisory council, we shared those brainstorm ideas and we asked for their, their perspectives on pros and cons. We asked them if they thought it should be a credit requirement or not a credit requirement, how important they think it is. Mallory shared what that was shared. We did that with the group today, so we haven't even had a chance to go through really the feedback. It was just a lot of conversation. But I think overall, and Mallory, you can chime in here, I think there's a recognition from students that yes, they want to learn this. Yes, they want it to be meaningful. Not quite sure how this all fits in with current schedules. Granted, right, we're talking to current juniors and seniors, knowing it doesn't impact them. But the group was very, very engaged in the conversation and wanted to make sure that whatever we do is good for that next group of students coming up. Would you add anything?
I think so. Not right now anyways.
We still need to go through all of that.
Discussion, yeah.
So, so I guess what we want to hear from the board tonight is any interest, ideas or input that you have as we, you know, go on with this review process to ultimately come back with a good recommendation tonight.
Okay. Any thoughts anybody wants to share now? I mean, I know with that bill popping in, it's kind of, we'll find out more about that in the next couple of months, but what do you guys?
There's high value in having a dedicated financial literacy curriculum. I mean, there's just a lot of benefit that comes from it. You know, some of your incentive concerns, you know, if kids understand early on in high school how finances work in the real world, that can provide some motivation towards, you know, skills, TRITech or looking towards those AP classes to get some of that dual credit. Could be a springboard for some of those conversations. But I, and I know this is not the place for this discussion, but do we have on the calendar already a time to talk about some of the credit restrictions that we have and just how tight it is and what we can do about that? Because I feel like we need to have that conversation at some point to figure out how to work this in.
Yeah, I think you're writing down some notes on doing that already. So yeah, so it'd be something we can add to the future, future items.
I definitely want to state that I absolutely 100% think that this needs to be required. Like I really, really believe that strongly. I feel like too much of school is just stuff, but it's not stuff you can use, right? And so the more stuff that you can use, I think that's really actually setting our, setting our kids up for true success in life. So I am there. Now, how do we do it? I mean, it's a good question. To Brittany's point, you know, without knowing how the rest of Domino's falls, it's kind of hard. But I do have a question like the computer, and I don't know the answer to this, but like I should probably. The, the computers, you know, is that like up to date? Cause as, as everything progresses so quickly in that, with that world, that tech world, is that up to date, do you feel like?
So the computer applications courses are really focused on the Microsoft productivity suite, which is, you know, what we, most people use every day. Either it's Word, Excel, you know, PowerPoint. So, so, and so yes, it's relevant and up to date. It doesn't maybe include.
But is that a whole course?
Use of technologies.
Yeah.
Use of AI and chat GPT and some of those things.
Well, that's a whole thing. But is that a whole course, learning how to use PowerPoint and Excel? And I mean, I mean, how long, I mean, how long does it take to learn that really?
I did, yeah.
Mallory, did you feel like it went slow or fast or could you have put more things into that course?
So that year, we went into lockdown.
So not fair.
Lockdown!
So one thing that my degree group talked about, so one of the options as a potential way of implementing the financial literacy was change computer competency requirement to half a credit financial literacy and half a credit of digital literacy. So it's one full year and you're getting both of them. And my group talked about how, like with new classes coming. For example, I didn't get, I didn't bring a Chromebook home until eighth grade, whereas my brother is in eighth grade now, brought one home when he was in third grade. So like every class is getting more and more advanced. So maybe potentially a whole year of computer isn't necessary for them, especially 2029 class. And so maybe cutting it down to half a semester and then adding the second semester of financial. My group was like that, but it'd be interesting to look into.
Yeah, that's, that's my first thought is like, I mean, do what you just said, yeah.
Anybody?
I, I think going to some of the points, the financial literacy is very important. I actually think a couple of things. With the kids getting their Chromebooks now in elementary school, I think some of these computer competency stuff, we could ideally push it back into the middle schools and elementary schools, which would open up time and perhaps provide some more flexibility in terms of scheduling and solve some of those problems.
Yeah, and more stuff we can push down to the middle school.
By the time they're in ninth grade, they should know how to use, I mean, they're, they've used Word, they've used PowerPoint. I see my kids doing that. The, the other thing though is, is I think particularly the financial literacy, while it would be nice in ninth grade, really I think where it can become very useful and applicable is actually as juniors and seniors. Because then what you're doing is helping them plan for college or technical school school. You're starting to talk about looking at careers and how that impacts their finances. Looking at, and, and so now when we're sitting down talking about how you get a loan, you're talking about how you get a loan, particularly if you're looking to go to college and you need to. And so it becomes applicable and as it becomes applicable, kids become invested. If it, if it doesn't relate to what they're doing, and that's my concern about you go to a freshman and tell them about a savings and loans and investment, that's nothing in their world right there. You talk to a senior who's in their, their final semester of their senior year and they're getting ready to go to college or maybe their, their first semester of their senior year, they're getting, starting to think about college and starting to think about jobs and starting to think about, okay, what am I going to do when I graduate? That's when the finances suddenly start to be real. Because all of a sudden, they're starting to go, wait a second, I gotta, I gotta pay for this.
Or if they're not, they need to be real.
Yeah, they're gonna get real. So that's where I think if we're looking at implementation, that might be where a half-credit of, and, and in some of this stuff, the one, the one point to the digital currents or the digital fluency is speaking realistically. Our kids need to know how to use a lot of this AI stuff. And if we're going to do a computer competency, that's where I think there's more value than teaching them how to do PowerPoint. It's teaching them how to use chat GPT, how to use some of these AI technologies because appropriately. Because that's really what the future is going to demand, not how to use PowerPoint.
So chat GPT will make it.
Yeah, you get, so a thought, a thought and a question. So a thought, are we also, I mean, obviously you're talking about Microsoft products within that, but my kids are always using the Google stuff, right? The Google, the Google equivalent. So are we kind of talking, teaching that too or no? I mean, I know they're similar, but there are, there are some differences and.
Not in the computer literacy credit class. It's strictly Microsoft because they have to take the competency test. And I think you also get certified and.
Cause how many kids are really using Microsoft versus, you know, versus the Google products really? That's really actually what they're.
The high schools don't actually let you use it. It's, I've only used it in CDC, so.
You don't, you, we use what?
Microsoft at CDC at the high school, they certainly.
Yeah, exactly.
The high school strictly.
At least it kind of.
Yeah. But our computer application test is on Microsoft. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, now, now, they're, they're similar, they track.
Well, I know, I know they're similar, but we're just saying we can't, we can't require they be concernedified in Microsoft and then not allow them to use it.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just say, you know, I, because we issue Chromebooks, right?
Yeah, it's all, it's all built in, yeah. Which is why Chrome gives you the Chromebooks.
They're still kind of the same.
It sounds like we could add to the discussion or we're essentially having it now on, on that computer application process. My daughter was forced just through a scheduling issue to take computer science as opposed to computer application. She is not a computer science person. It was a difficult class for her, but she made it through it. And I think that that is something that would be really useful for all students to take just to understand. I mean, that's essentially the language of technology these days is to have that base of computer science. So if, I don't know if it's worth continuing the discussion here or adding it down the road to talk about the computer application curriculum and if it needs to be revamped.
For competence, computer competency credit.
We can maybe get some more information on that. You can just update us where, where the apps classes are and what they're doing.
One last little comment is, is can we look at pushing some of that down to middle school? Cause I mean, it seems like that's actually where they need to learn it, is the middle school. So by the time they go to high school, that they, they're expected to know how to do this stuff, the Microsoft stuff and Google stuff. But to your credit.
I'm recording the ideas and thoughts.
To your point today, I think we all think the financial literacy is. To your point today, I think we all think the financial literacy is important.
After the question you actually.
I, I would just say, I mean, I under, the legislature is going to do their thing. We're looking at potentially doing something down the road. I would just say along the way, if we can find pockets of where we can start delivering that now, and, you know, even if it's some lessons in a class or whatever, and just making sure we're implementing what we can before the five-year mark or whatever, it's, it's just going to help, so. All right, so next up, we have no unfinished business. So we'll move on to new business, policy 2314 instructions, use of outside media resources in the classroom. Dr. Pierce will present for us.
Okay. So this policy come up, this is a policy that the board amended in September. And if you recall, the part that got amended is this, this part here that it used to say elementary students in K-5 would only be shown G-rated movies and that PG movies would be only shown eight to 12. And that got revised to be K-2 for G and PG allowable in grades three through 12. And the other thing that got updated was that all movies shown to students must be previewed from approved by the principal and require permission. So subsequent to that, students came and spoke to the board advocating that PG 13 rated films be allowable in middle and high school, so that this be changed to six, 12 instead of nine, 12. I think, I think Micah also spoke to the class.
Yep.
On this, and then, so it was requested that this get back on the agenda for, for discussion, whether or not you want to further amend the policy.
I just want the kids to know that, that, I, so a middle school class asked if I would come and, and speak to them about this. Because I happen, you know, anyway, so my neighbor was in this class. And then, and that was really good. I, that was so good to talk to those kids that kind of made me like rethink some things, right? But there's a balance between giving make sure your parents have the rights and they understand things versus like what's realistically set the soul. So, so Gabe and I actually spent a long time talking about this today, so I have an idea.
You have an idea? What's your idea?
Would you like to share?
Tell us what your idea is.
Thirteen is seventh grade, right?
Thirteen is at some point during seventh grade.
Yeah.
So an, like a young seventh grader might not turn thirteen until approaching eighth grade.
Just want to make sure I'm getting my math right.
Yeah.
Yes, so that's been part of this. So here's what I think, you guys know what you think. G movie is okay across the board. Without, without parental permission, that's okay to watch a, a G movie from K through 12, right? PG, I would say yes in high school without permission during high school, that's PG. And then, but as far as middle school and elementary school, a PG movie with permission.
At all grade, kindergarten.
For middle, yes, for, yes, yeah, yeah. For kindergarten through middle school, if the, if the teacher wants to watch a PG movie from middle school to eighth grade, you get permission, but a PG movie. And as far as a PG 13 movie, I'm thinking definitely since you're in middle school and most of those kids aren't even thirteen yet, I would say, I would say no. I would say no PG 13s in elementary school or in middle school. I don't think we need to show, even take that chance. If, if, if it says PG 13, then if the kids aren't thirteen, I think it's a no-brainer, you say no. And then in high school, maybe permission, maybe not, whatever, it goes, I think.
Can I ask to clarify my question on that?
Sure.
I know that when the student came to speak, the focus was really on the rating, like allowing PG 13 movies at middle school, not just high school, and not really anything about the parent permission.
Right.
So was that something that came out, because I, because I feel like that's something that the board just changed in September to say parent permission for all movies. So we're just getting this, you know, acclimated to that particular part. And I don't remember the student raising that, so I'm just curious if that came out in the conversation with the class or?
So I, I can share that I, the, the parental permission piece that I've received feedback on is just around G movies. So I've, I've actually had a lot of teachers reach out and say, look, we, we've always been able to show G movies. It's just made it a lot harder to be able to play a movie in class, a G movie. And, and I would, I would agree. I, I mean, to me, I think that's the piece where we tried, we had good intentions. We, we were trying to update the, you know, the policy and we made it more difficult on our staff. And, and so I, I think for me, the, the change would just be PG movies and above need parental permission. G movies, you're, you're fine to, you're fine to watch. But that's all I would change personally, and that's just feedback from staff. And I, again, you, you're trying to update stuff and you get feedback and.
Mike, you helped, you were on the board when you, they came up with this, what are your thoughts?
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm rereading this about time share, trying to go through this. So, because right now we have to have permission for.
Anything.
Gotcha, yeah, no, that's, that's too much. I mean, I'm just looking at this, so elementary students K through 12, G, PG rated may be shown three through 12. PG 13 rated will be shown to students grades nine to 12.
So basically it's like all G is going to be, is okay and then.
Yeah, which is, yeah, which is not a problem. I have no issue with that. Permission must be received and parents prior to showing. So, yeah. Again, G movies to me, I think should just be free rein.
Yep.
You know, and the hard part is, you know, like, as our, our young presenter was talking about the PG 13 shows, you know, you got like Bowana and stuff like that, the kids were watching anyway, so.
Bowana's PG 13?
No, which, which, one of them was. He was talking about one of the, one of the Disney movies with PG 13.
Oh, really?
Or Pixar.
Yeah.
And again, maybe I'm just not very sensitive to this stuff.
But then you got like Titanic, which is, has seen, you know, and then it's like.
Don't ruin the end of the board, I haven't seen it.
They also, they also, it doesn't sink.
I, I just, I, I think we, we had good intentions. I think all the board members shared their concern last time. You know, we had a board member who wanted to put parental permission on all of it, which we did. Come to find out, it's a little cumbersome and it handcuffs our teachers to be able to say, hey, I'm going to throw on this G movie on, you know, lunch break because my kids are inside the recess. So, so I think it was good feedback and like I said, I, I would just, I would, I would update it to be PG and above needs parental permission. I think G, anyone can.
Do we need parental permission for PG in high school?
I.
And part of, and would that make things, I mean, part of it is, is that make it more complicated? Or part of it is, is I think making things easier for everybody is great as long as we're mitigating risk.
And that's what I'm proposing, that, that PG is allowable in high school. That's what I, I think that PG should be okay in high school.
And PG is allowable, I mean, I just think there's two different issues.
Yeah, no.
Like PG is allowable.
Without parental permission.
So I guess my first clarifying, just because I'm going to need to tweak the wording here if you're going to vote on this. Aside from the parent permission piece, are you wanting to change any of the ratings of what film ratings can be shown at each level? Is, is anyone wanting to see that part changed?
I'm comfortable with what's written here, but Micah, you did bring up showing PG in all of elementary. So do you want PG changed so that K through two can also watch PG?
Yeah, I, I think that, I think if parents sign off on it and there's, you're in elementary school and, and then a parent signs off on it, I think that you can, you should be able to watch that, yeah. As long as the parents know, I'm good with it, I mean.
I'm okay with it as written. I, I think by avoiding the issues with K through two with P, with PG films, you can get, PG spans a huge spectrum and just makes it easy where there's a lot, it makes sure you don't have to deal with anything. Parent, parents, especially at that age, have a wide variety of, it makes it easy. I don't know, what are you guys?
No, I'm with you. I think that's a good way to go. And I just, again, I just take, say G rated, anyone can watch G, G rated movies and.
Yeah.
Then go with everything else that's written.
Yeah.
So I, I do think that this first part does say anybody can see G, G rated movies, right?
Yeah, yeah, that, that section is fine, it's just the permission.
Without, without parental, without parental permission.
This part that needs to be amended that says, so can you all get a word in here to reflect what it is you're?
So that part should still say that all movies shown should be previewed completely, I don't know.
Yeah.
Everybody, but that part should stay, but, but parents don't need to give permission for G rated movies.
And permission must be received from parents prior to showing.
For any movie above a PG ra, or above a G rating. Unless, like I said, unless we want to say for high school students, it can be PG and they don't need parent permission.
I'm okay with that, but. I'm, I'm okay with PG 13 in high school with parent with permission, but.
Yeah.
I guess.
You can do PG 13.
Well, as long as it gets moving.
Just, yeah, so PG wouldn't need approval in high school from their parents. What do you guys think? I, I mean, I don't think it matters, whatever.
I'm okay with that. Yeah, I'm okay with that, yes.
I am too.
It's almost like you need to look table.
No, no, you know.
I know.
That's what I'm saying.
I tried to make a table on this and I was like, man, this is way harder than it should be.
We just want to make it easy.
Yeah.
I, I need to discuss some of the wording. But am I, am I starting to capture what you're saying? That PG movies require parent permission, PG, I mean, I'm sorry, PG 13 movies, PG movies don't, G, G movies don't.
PG, well, what do you, are we making this too complicated? Dr. Pierce?
No, 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 I just want to make sure that we get it right in terms of what it is you want the amended policy to say so you can vote on it.
Will this make this difficult for teachers though? That's what we want, is it would it be easier just to say?
One thing to remember is, you know, the, the policy does say it's the intent of the district to allow the use of outside resources to enhance student learning and that, you know, all, all videos, I, I can understand like recess or something like that, right? It's really a day recess. But, but really movies shown in the classroom should, should have some connection to the current home and be valuable. So it's like, on the one hand, we don't want just movies being shown all the time, right? So I think having some guidelines in place is good and having some, you know, making sure that the movie's been very reviewed and approved by the principals, so there's some checks in place to ensure that the movie has some kind of instructional value is good. And then, you know, I, I think what you're saying here, maybe it is overkill to require parent permission for G movies, but I still certainly want the teacher to review the movie and say, you know, how does it connect with what I'm, with what the standards are and make sure the principal's good with it. So I, I'm fine, you know, with, with, my recommendation is, you know, fine with where you're going, I'm just trying to capture it correctly.
That's what I was just saying, all, all PG movies and above need rental permission. And then, and that's the easiest way to capture.
Yep.
From third grade through high school, PG and above needs parental permission, G movies.
Sounds good to me.
Open, open, open door. And I think too, we got, you think about, at least in my experience or my understanding, well, I, I don't know how much movie time shown in middle school or high school. Again, I think about the elementary school and when there's, you know, teachers trying to eat lunch and they got all the kids in class, so they're throwing a movie on, they want to be able to.
So basically just say all PG movies require, PG movies and above require parental permission.
And did you really go above?
Yeah, just, yeah.
Not what, not what are.
No, all PG and above, so PG and PG 13.
Oh, I'm sorry, all PG.
So, yeah, so all you have to add in there is all PG movies require.
PG and above require.
Or you could say PG and PG 13, just to be explicit.
Yeah, wrong, you, wrong was very.
Yeah.
Put that word in there.
Oh, PG and PG 13 movies require parent permission prior to showing, no R, yeah. Mike, are you okay with that?
I'm good. Good, I'm good.
All right. Do we have any other questions or updates?
Is that supposed to be K through 12, the first line in B, elementary students in, in grades K through 12?
K through two, low and shown G, G rated movies.
Yeah, so they can.
Only shown G.
Yeah, okay.
So then C will need to reflect the same thing as B in terms of parent permission.
Now this one, I don't think I have to, I don't think.
I think, I think that's.
Well, it says ask be approved.
So the TV, PG.
Approved by parents or principals.
Yeah, and permission received.
Okay, so it's actually the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect, all right.
If there are no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion for first and second reading.
We will move to accept policy 2314 as amended.
For first and second. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Holly, call for the roll call vote.
All right, Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. Galbert?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Blundhill?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
All right. All right. Perfect, so we'll move to our next item in new business, the February 14th board meeting date. Dr. Pierce, do you want to just mention the?
So it was, it was raised February 14th, it's Valentine's Day and there's a board meeting scheduled and I think interested by Mr. Valentine, since it's Valentine's Day, yes. Potentially moved up board meeting.
Do we have any recommendations or any conflicts if we were to move it to Tuesday?
I think we recommend Tuesday.
We only have one meeting in February, don't we? Looks like we just have one for the 14th, so we can move it to the 21st.
Yeah, I'd be fine.
And, and any day is fine. I think I, I prefer to not do it on Valentine's Day. I think my wife would prefer that as well.
We've been married long enough.
There is the, there is the, the school board meeting on February 28th.
Oh, there is.
So I just recommended February 13th, Tuesday, the day before. That was my recommendation.
Any, I mean, any conflicts and we can all obviously.
It looks like there was a study session that was supposed to be that day as well, so we were starting at four that day. And so. I just wanted to make everyone aware as they're checking their calendars to make sure they also had.
Tuesday.
Yes, Tuesday.
Yes, February 14th was the study session.
I just want to advance, they're like, I can change my study.
It works for me.
I'd be fine, I might be a little bit late for the study session, but just because I'll be coming tomorrow.
Good for you, okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to change the board date from the 14th to the 13th.
I move that we change the, the school board meeting and the, the study session from Wednesday, the 14th, February 14th to Wednesday, February 13th.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Dr. Miller? Holly, we'll call for the roll call vote.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Connors, this is on the first page.
I'm like, God.
All right, from the top.
How quickly they forget.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Galbert?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Blundhill, yes. Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you, Holly. Our next item under new business is organizational changes and succession planning. And the floor to Dr. Pierce.
Okay, well, I, you know, communicated with the organization this week, what I communicated with the board and with cabinet in October. And that is that I'm, I'm planning my retirement for June 2025. And so that's 18 months away. It's a ways away, but I, you know, just as I'm sharing that news, I, I want to express what I expressed to staff today is that I feel really blessed. today is that I feel really blessed to have, you know, to serve in our district. And I came to this district with twenty-four years of experience in a prior district and six years experience as a superintendent there. So by the, by the time I retire, I'll have thirty years of experience in public education and twelve of that serving as a superintendent. So it's, it's, it's been a long time. And then, on the other hand, it's gone really fast. So I'm excited about it, can continue to live in this community. My husband and I live here. We love it here. I've got family here. So I'm really excited about it and want to make sure that we're setting up the organization for continued success. And while my retirement is still eighteen months off, we have some other organizational changes that have been communicated as well. Doug Christensen, who's our associate superintendent for human resources, is leaving at the end of this month. He's taken a new job, new opportunity out at Hanford Mission Integration Solutions. So do want to just give a shout out to Doug for his many, many years of service to Kennewick. And this is his last board meeting tonight. And we're really gonna miss Doug. I've really enjoyed working with you. He's a great colleague and a friend. And I know he's going to be really missed around here by me and everybody else. We do have a short term plan in place for supporting the HR department over these next few months. Tony Nighthold is our HR director, and she'll be stepping up and assuming a lot of the day-to-day responsibilities that Doug has now. Other members of the team will continue to, you know, help support. Bronson continues as our legal counsel and, you know, giving great advice on lots of HR-related legal items and all of that. So we've got a good plan in place, and Doug's going to be around to kind of help on the peripheral and help provide support as well. And then, our good friend Vic Roberts has also announced his solidified plan for retirement, which is actually at the end of this school year, at the end of summer, really. So Vic's committed to stay on really through September, maybe October, Vic, I don't know, but we'll push it, next fall and really wanting to make sure, you know, we've got good budget in place. And, you know, Vic served in the public sector for thirty-four years, and he's been here in our district for the past eighteen. And as I said earlier, you know, he's just done an outstanding job in terms of financial management for us. And so it's a big, big shoes to fill there, and we're really happy for Vic. And, you know, I'm sure he's got big, fun plans for retirement. So there are a lot of changes in the organization. And because of the timing of some of these plans, there's a real opportunity to plan, you know, to do some succession planning. And so, and ensure smooth transitions. So really, this is the opportunity, I think, for the board to start talking about next steps. I'm happy to share some thinking with you about, you know, organization, current organization and, and, you know, potential organization. When I joined the district, there was like a deputy superintendent successor plan in place, right, when I came here. And, and so that's something that the board might want to consider and discuss. And, you know, so anyway, that's, that's the news that you all already know, that the organization knows, and you all have known since October. But so I don't, I'm not exactly sure how you want to proceed with the talking about next steps. I can share some thoughts. You can take the lead, whatever you prefer.
Yeah, I, I think I'd like to hear Dr. Pierce's recommendations first, so we can kind of maybe get an idea. Because I know you obviously came in with, you know, you shadowed for a while and those things, so.
I just happen to have a flow chart, just to be clear.
So, so one thing that we've talked about, my team and I, is, let me get over here.
You know, given the district our size, what's, you know, we're looking at what's the optimal organization of the board, cabinet team, and our teams to really best serve the larger organization. So I gave you two handouts here. One is, and I'll bring it up since we're talking about, what is our current district organizational chart? And this, that's the bigger one here that you've all seen. And this just shows how our director level of central office administrative team and cabinet is organized. And this, we're documents taking a long time to open up, so.
Maybe should use the Google now.
So this is the, you know, current, current org chart. So what, one, with Doug leaving and with Vic retiring, there's an opportunity to, we think, to streamline and combine these two cabinet positions into one position that would oversee operations and then do some backfilling of support in the HR and business office. And then that position could become a deputy superintendent, successor position that could be posted and filled for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, provide that next superintendent opportunity to really learn and oversee operations and then have some, some transition time while I'm still here as well. So what that would look like would be what I'll show you on this next handout that you have in front of you, which is just a real simple way, but it shows.
Tracy, really quick, this is just showing my ignorance. I'm sorry. What's the difference between an associate superintendent, assistant superintendent, and executive director? Is it just title or is it?
Very good question.
Is there fundamental difference? Says we're combining positions, just understand.
Very, very good question. There is really no difference in, it's just titles between assistant superintendent and executive director. And I, you know, we've discussed over the past several years of, you know, we should, maybe we should just call everybody the same thing. Because essentially, for example, Ron, Vic, Robin, they're all at that same assistant superintendent level, sitting on cabinet overseeing, have big, you know, scope of duties and responsibilities. Now, there is an associate superintendent who, and that's Doug. So there's a little bit of a differential between like assistant super and associate super. So, and that's in recognition of, you know, if I'm out of the office and there needs to be a snow call or there's an emergency or something like that, that's, that associate superintendent is the person who's the designated person in charge of, I'm not here. So that's how it's worked here. So if we were to take those two positions and create a deputy super, a deputy successor superintendent who oversees operations, then they would oversee HR, we'd have a director of HR and an assistant director of HR like we do now, and maybe some additional kind of backfill in HR to provide more support there. Transportation essentially remains the same, but reports up to this person. And so it's kind of taking the people who report up to Doug and the people who report up to Vic and not link that into one position, but adding, taking the resource from the second position that we're like melding together and beefing up HR and beefing up business office. And then that person would oversee all of these departments. Now, if you were to go with the deputy successor superintendent idea for next school year, then you'd be essentially doing a superintendent search, starting that, this, you know, off here after the first of the year and posting it much like it was posted when I joined the district. So that person, you'd be going through the whole superintendent, because you're really hiring for a superintendent, just kind of a year off. Now, one key difference here is, I think, when I joined the district, there was an added position, right? They added a deputy successor superintendent position to the short term for that one year that turned out to be like half a year, right, when I was here. We wouldn't be doing that because of the changes. And in fact, we'd be, you know, it would be a net, this org would be a net, we wouldn't be adding anything. We'd be melding two positions. The person, the future superintendent would do this job for a year and then step into the superintendent job. And then you would fill, this, this would become like associate superintendent of operations or assistant superintendent of operations or whatever. But that's.
Yeah. It wouldn't be a successor position anymore.
Right. And we don't, like, in our constructure, there is no deputy superintendent. A lot of this is just terminology and labels. Some districts have deputy superintendents. In some, some, in some district, it means that's the designated person who's like next in line. But in many districts, it just means that they're, they're kind of an associate superintendent. It's no, it doesn't necessarily mean they're going to be the next superintendent. It's just terminology. In this case, by saying, you know, successor, that's what you're really hiring for the leadership.
But in that case, the person really have a fairly good understanding then of the finances and the human resources issues coming into becoming superintendent.
Right. They would, they would have, yes.
Sorry, could you just say one more time that if, following this model, we would have someone come in as the deputy successor superintendent? And then once that person becomes a superintendent, then your director of human resources and director of business become the new Doug and Vic? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, explain that part.
And also.
So we would need to come in and fill.
This would be filled by the superintendent.
And also, Tracy, there's actually one more ring, like, level, I guess, above that deputy super, that's, that's the superintendent. So really, there should be one more lineup and then.
And then, of course, the board.
Yeah. Yeah. So this is kind of a complete.
It's just a branch of it.
So the director of business office, that's, is that the fiscal officer, business office?
So we don't really, you know, right now, we have a fiscal officer. We don't have a director of.
Business office.
Business office.
And so that would kind of be melded into that position of director of business office?
Yeah. So we thought, you know, we can look internally at who we have that can potentially move into some of these positions and, yeah.
And part of, I guess, my question is, is you're changing, it sounds like a structure of command, just on this model. I just wanted to make sure with the nutrition and purchasing warehouse, instead of reporting up to one person, they'll report up to a person who's a step lower? Will that, will that potentially cause issues? Will that, that cause those people to be frustrated or feel like they're being demoted?
Oh, if they were reporting to the director instead of.
Directly to.
Cabinet, who went in directly.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm kind of looking at this. I don't think so. I don't think it would be an issue.
But we just don't want to make somebody unnecessarily feel like they're demoted. I mean, it's a restructuring, I get it, but I don't want anybody to walk away and feel like, hey, wait, I'm not appreciated.
And I appreciate you thinking about that and putting that lens to it.
Is that so?
Yeah, oh, thank you. Like, so this, this is Christine, who's our director of nutrition services, for example. And Sadekso is like a partner to us, right? We contract with them. So they have their own, like, corporate structure.
Got it.
And like, the reality is, you know, I mean, Vic does a lot of day-to-day with them. And we, I meet with Vic and Christine on a regular basis. So there's, I don't think it would be seen as any negative at all.
I like the structure. It seems like we're basically consolidating two leadership positions into one. Is that correct?
Yes, but then we're hiring.
Yeah, because the number of positions stay the same. So it's not.
So you're combining.
Yeah.
You're combining two higher-level positions, which give you a certain financial salary, and you're backfilling the one position and two kind of lower-level positions. So the salaries are going to financially wash or be very close to, so you're not adding much, if any, financial.
Evaluating resources and aligning functions, like organizational functions, into a operations division.
Which, so essentially, their function is the COO.
That's exactly, that's exactly what I was going to say. You're making, you're making a COO position is what we're, is what we're generating.
Makes sense.
So now, the thing is, though, is the timeline is ASAP. It's like, because you have to hire and start in January to get the candidate selection.
I was actually looking at some of, you know, like superintendent openings across the state. And, you know, those search processes are underway, right? Not all of them, I don't know what all will miss early open. But, you know, some of them, like, they started the conversation in November, you know, they're, they're actively doing like the survey part of it. So my recommendation would be, if you wanted to, if you wanted to go with a search firm, like many districts do, you know, that the next step would be, you know, probably David, like, reaching out to them, maybe before break, and, and starting to get some kind of timelines and things in place. Because I think early January, you're going to want to start getting the posting out there and doing the survey. I have, I have, for example, Ellensburg, they're, they're doing a search process right now. So I went and looked at what, what they're doing in their timeline, and I have that information. But, yeah, it needs to get.
Yeah.
Sounds like we got to start now.
I would recommend we get after it. So, and again, sorry, but I would, I would say, when you filed, Tracy, when you did it, were you found through a search?
Yeah.
Search firm, right? I'm thinking we're going to broaden our reach by using a search firm.
Yeah, I agree. A firm and open the widest net you can get, and then, and then we, we bring it in, yeah.
So Tracy, you went through this six years ago, it sounds like. What were things that drew you to here that can help us as we move forward? Because I, are there things?
My mother lives here.
So we need to find we like it, move the mother.
Yeah. No, I mean, but truly, I, I think, you know, a big draw for me here was the
community and my family is here. And, and then seeing that this, you know, looking at the profile of the district, a lot of the materials that some were created by Robin and the communications team and some, you know, in conjunction with the search firm. I mean, all of that is really important, I think, in terms of conveying the values of the, of the district, you know, what you're looking for, what the needs and challenges are. And then, you know, as a candidate reflecting on, is this, would this be a good fit for me? And so those are all of the things that, that drew me here. And then I think the process too. You know, it's a, it's a two-way kind of thing. I mean, I, you're interviewing a candidate, but the candidate's also.
Interviewing, yes.
Yeah, you know, and, 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 and meeting people and, and, and learning and thinking about, is this really going to be a good fit? And so my experience was very positive. It was, you know, there was all the paperwork work part of it. And then there was interview, like, public interview with the, with the board. This room, I remember it well. And then, and, and that was, you know, people were observing that. And then there was like a series of, after being identified as a finalist, there was a series of interviews with, like, the superintendent student advisory council was part of that, staff interviews, principal, you know, different groups. So the board a couple of different times, which conveyed to me that, A, gave me an opportunity as a candidate to learn, you know, hear from lots of different people, meet lots of different people. Then there was like a public meeting part of it. So it was a rigorous, which I think is great, and helped me understand, like, you know, high standards and wanting to work somewhere. I mean, I came from a high performing district with high standards, and I wanted to, you know, continue that. So anyway, I, I think the, the process is a good process that's been outlined by the search firm that was used previously.
Do we know who the previous search firm was?
Yeah, it was, so here, I, this is, I printed this stuff off of Ellensburg's stuff. But this is the, the firm. And they kind of go through what their process is, because they really help. They work hand-in-hand, you know, with the board. Obviously, it's the board's decision and all of that, but they're helping you along the way.
Do you know, are we, are we looking at, compared to the other districts, are we the larger or largest district that will be looking that, as of right now? Because I can't imagine, I mean, Ellensburg's probably smaller than us.
About three thousand.
Yeah.
So students. You know, I'd have to go look at the list, honestly. And the list I'm referring to is in the west at E.
Some students. Um, you know, I'd have to go look at the list, honestly, um, and the list I'm referring to is, in the WASDA e-clippings, there's a, a little part there that says superintendent openings. And I, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it seems like right now it's kind of some smaller districts, but is it so smaller? I'm looking at my team over there.
Yeah, there was a president, or a, a presentation at WASDA about searching, and, and I think I remember looking at that link. There was like five or six, but they were all small. I mean, I don't think anything was over five thousand students, so.
Where do most superintendents look to find about, if, if you've got a superintendent, let's just throw up in West Virginia or Missouri, whatever, how are they gonna find out about us? Is there a way?
So that's on, a, a really good question, and maybe one that firm people might be able to answer better. There's some national, so AASA is the American Association of School Administrators, right? And so, like, they definitely, and they push out postings. And then the, it's kind of like the National School Board Association and WASDA, there's AASA and WASA. So WASA is the Washington Association of School Administrators. They push out postings. I get, you know, routinely, as I'm sure many people do, um, emails, they must get lists from somewhere about openings. Like, I got, I got a list, a, a notification about Ellensburg, you know, I mean, so there's lists that are maintained, but I'm thinking all of that's maybe more state and local, and I don't know. Sometimes I get things from across the country, so, but the, I think the search firm might be able to answer that.
So there's, is there credentialing that is state-specific? I mean, because, just like with teachers, you have to come and get your Washington State.
Well, it's really interesting, unless I'm wrong, I would want to just verify this. So I, I have a doctorate and I have a superintendent credential and a principal certification and a teacher certification. I think in the state of Washington, you don't really need any of those things to be a superintendent. I wouldn't recommend that. I would recommend that you hire somebody with, like, experience and credentials, but I think technically you, you don't, and I would want to verify that. I don't know if anybody's over at any of those tables knows. But I don't think you do. I don't think you do need anything, but you should have.
So, but we, we can cast a net wide enough to look outside the state. There's nothing that's holding us to looking at only Washington State.
I mean, yeah, we, we would share with the firm what we're looking for, all the jobs, duty-specific stuff, and then they would, that's, I mean, that's what they get paid to do, it's fine.
Maybe I'll talk to you. I, I'm just interested what you did personally. A lot of times, the search, you know, the search firms will tell you one thing. I mean, I know in my line of business, search firms will tell you one thing about, here's how people look, but, but I know how it really works for most people. And like, for example, in, in what I do, usually it's word of mouth, and you're looking amongst people, you know, you'll call your friends or call where you trained or, and go that direction. I'm just curious, is it the same, or is it, search firms, are they right? Are they gonna, is it, the search firm, what they're using, is that usually how they find their jobs?
I'm just not a hundred percent sure. I would say that if you're a sitting, if, if you're a, if you're a sitting superintendent or a district admin, district-level administrator looking for a superintendency, you're, you're keeping your eye out on the WASA site and the WASDA site, and you're, you know, you're, you're looking, you're keeping your ears open and your eyes open, and then you might be contacting the, the search firm to say, you know, once the posting is there. All my experience is in this state, so honestly, I don't really know what it kind of looks like to move from state to state, yeah.
I'm just curious how people and how superintendents even look, and.
Yeah, I, I guess that's what the firm's for, right?
I have to imagine it's similar. It's, it's, I think all industries have their newsletters and job postings and, you know, Indeed, I mean, who, who knows where it's all, you know, there's, there's a thousand ways to recruit.
Yeah, so I guess my, because like I said.
Then they also talk.
It's, it's a lot of talking, and that's one of the things I, I mean, I guess I would ask, in addition to the search, if you could reach out to some of your colleagues that you think might be good candidates or, or might know people who are good candidates, that would probably be just as helpful as a search. I mean, I know, and, and often is far more productive than even the search firms.
Yeah, I think we, we cast the widest net using the resources we have, and it'll narrow itself down, so. Um, but if I understand correctly, we need to move on this quickly, so we would need to look into the firm and maybe get some stuff out before break. Is that kind of your thought?
Um, I, I, what, I guess what I'm thinking is, and I don't know, it's certainly done, but, but I'm thinking if the board authorized you, you know, as board president, to like move forward with talking with the search firm and stuff, then we could, we could sit, we could get on the phone with them, you know, as soon as possible, and start that conversation, and then I don't know that there would be other, any other board action, right, that would be needed at this point, because then it's like getting all of the stuff together and keeping the, you know, board informed, like, I'll just pass this down so you can see it. This, this is what the Ellensburg School District put on their, in their, it's on their website about like their timeline. I only have one copy, but I think that would probably be the next steps, like, working toward putting that timeline together.
Need to make a motion for this, or?
I, I, I would recommend making a motion to authorize Gabe as board president to reach out to the.
To work with you and reach out to the search firm.
Reach out to the search firm and get things going.
Does anybody need to make that motion?
Do we have any other, any other questions, comments, concerns?
It's not, it's, it's not a major concern. It's not a major concern, but I just, this position here seems like somebody who needs to be characteristically, HR people have very soft skills, and they're good with people, and not that finance people are not, but finance people have a very. So I.
Vic's the worst, just say it, you don't like Vic.
I actually really love Vic. Um, so I, I, I guess I just need some reassurance that there is someone out there who is both. That has those soft skills, but still has the, that understanding, and particularly considering the, you know, the budget issues that we have coming. We're going to need somebody who can be very thorough and creative and. Okay, so someone, there is someone out there.
There, there is someone.
There's gotta be someone.
We're, we're not gonna find anybody like Tracy, but we will find someone.
I'm working on a plan to get her to state. I don't know how.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? I'll entertain a motion. If not.
Okay, I move that we, um, allow Gabe to work with Tracy to, uh, create next steps and to, uh, work towards hiring a, a search for, a firm and, um, for the purpose of hiring a new deputy successor superintendent.
Second.
Perfect, thank you. Holly will call for the roll call vote.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. Dalby?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Noah?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, next up is next meeting agenda, agenda, our semi-annual retreat. So we currently have board development and planning. Is there any other topics that we would like to add for discussion?
Gabe, I'll be, I'll be, uh, remote.
Okay.
In the area, but I'll, I'll be able to hopefully call in.
Look at you, always like.
Any.
I have a business meeting I have to do.
Any, any topics to add? I will add, uh, just a quick topic on just board procedures, just to ensure that we still want to continue following the same norms we've been doing, um, with emails and those kind of things, and then.
Seconding and.
And, yeah, just that process stuff. And then, um, I'd like to start a conversation on just behavior and discipline, just in general. It's come up a few times with, with the staff, and we've talked about it, so I'd like to add that.
I'd like to add counselors, and particularly, uh, the, how the counselors are.
Being utilized.
Being utilized, particularly in the pathway to graduation.
So we want, do we want to do this for the retreat, or do we want to do this for the back to the board meeting?
I don't care.
Yeah, we.
What's the difference? Retreat, we're down there in a circle, and there's no, you cannot take any action, it's just more of a discussion or.
It could be a retreat, that's fine. I'll be on the phone either way.
Okay.
Well, do you want to be here? We can push it back one meeting, and then you can be here.
Yeah, that's better. Let's, let's push it back one meeting for me, and like, if I'm asking for it, I should probably be here present.
Yeah.
I prefer that.
We'll move that to another meeting.
And I don't know how to quite go about getting, I would, I would like some more information, information on school safety. I know we had a presentation on in October. That presentation was focused primarily on the school safety officers, which is such a great program. Um, but, you know, we've already talked, you talked in your board report today that we're seeing heightened, uh, lockdowns, and we've had some activity lately that is concerning, might be indicative that there's some opportunity there to look at our school safety procedures, and I'm new and not familiar with what we're doing. Um, so I don't, I don't know. That would probably not be a, um, study, what's our next meeting called?
Uh, Retreat.
Retreat. It's probably not for the retreat. It might be better as a presentation from a district officer, I don't know, but.
Board meeting.
Yeah, board, board meeting. And I don't know if that's coming up, or if we've already, if that's an annual thing or not? I can't remember the safety thing.
Yeah, and it has happened, but we can, you know, and some of these things might be connected to, you know, like, sort of looking at capital moving forward, the capital budget. I mean, we've got some things that we might want to just update you on. So typically, we could kind of generate this list of things, and then I could work with, um, Gabe to figure out how, how you want to actually structure that retreat. So.
So, just so I'm clear, the retreat is basically kind of like a study session?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's more discuss, it's, it's discussion and not action. We're not doing, we don't do.
I don't, but no, what's a retreat, a study session? I don't actually know.
So, so, um, the retreats are essentially study sessions, and it used to be that there were two a, a year, and they're connected to exec session. There's always an exec session, and it's also kind of an opportunity. It's part of the superintendent evaluation that happens, um, at those times too, not. So there's like, but they're kind of planning, longer-term planning, uh, delving deep into topics, not making decisions. It's less like just, here's, here's staff recording, more board dialogue about, you know, future planning and that kind of a thing. And then the study sessions are new this year, so those got built in saying, you know, in, in addition to just those two times a year, can we have some times throughout the year to have some of these discussions?
So really, the study session is a retreat. It's just with a.
It's an opportunity for the five of us and you to, to sit in dialogue about long-term strategy, actually kind of talk about, hey, what are our big vision goals? What are our, so maybe, maybe as part of the retreat, maybe our, one of the discussions should be what are, what are the things the five of us are looking to really focus, you know, really want to focus on in the next year?
And we did that similar to, um, when, uh, Micah and Gabe first joined the board.
Yeah.
Kind of did some procedure things, and then just like priorities, and we did some processes, and we go back to that. Because that really does then inform our planning around, you know, like strategic plan updates for the next year, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we can go with that. If you have, if there's other stuff you want, and you call, we can work through it and figure out if it's.
I'll send emails to you and Tracy together.
Where it fits in the, because we might have stuff in the calendar coming up, maybe the first meeting in February that hits this topic that we can already.
I apologize if some of these questions are dumb, but I just didn't know the difference.
You've been here for four hours, so if you're, you've got four hours, you've got four hours' experience. All right, so, uh, so we have no other business as authorized by law, so I will adjourn the meeting nine thirty-three.